Good evening everyone, welcome to City Council. Roger, would you kindly lead us off, thank you.
Thank you Lord Provost. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council which is being held remotely and in a hybrid format in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act two thousand and three. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting which is being livestreamed. By participating in the meeting, you are consenting to being filmed and recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise this? If a member loses their connection, they should make effort to rejoin. But if this is not possible, the Committee Services Officer turns due to a declaration of interest to use their microphones when speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers. If you are to be the next speaker, please allow a pause after the last speaker has muted their microphone. Please then press the right-hand button on your console to activate your microphone. If you are joining the meeting remotely, please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to leave the meeting to see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting again and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Please do not use the hands-up function or intervene in any other way. And would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for no reason or where the review expressed, the convener will call for any member who does have a contrary view to indicate this through the chat. Eyes item will be again. Please would members not use the chat for any other purpose as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the council and the required standards of conduct and behaviour are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the provisions of the councillor's code of conduct will apply in the usual way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, Lord Provost, so I'll now ask the Committee Services Officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Present.
Present. Present.
Present.
Present. Present.
I cannot hear the roll call but I always come after councillor Hunter so present.
Present. Bailey Roberts.
I'm here.
Chris Lurin.
Present.
Bailey Soares.
Yes, I'm here.
Chris Short. Chris Smith.
I'm here.
Chris Tolland.
I am here.
Bailey Keenan.
Present.
And received applause from Chris Crookshank, Chris Finnegan.
Good evening, I'm here.
Chris McHugh.
Present.
Chris McIrvin.
Present.
Bailey Wright. Bailey McPherson.
A good evening, present.
Chris Coleman. Chris Coleman. Thank you. Chris Creighton.
Good evening.
Chris Duncan.
Here.
Bailey Scott.
Here.
That concludes the roll call, thank you very much. Thank you Lord Provost. Lord Provost, members of the council, item two is the minutes for information and record purposes.
Any questions? Disagreed? Thank you. Roger.
Item two, appointments to outside bodies. On a reference to article two-one of the minute of meeting of this council of nineteenth August twenty twenty-four, it is reported that there is a vacancy on the following outside bodies which falls to be filled by a member of the major opposition group. A, Dundee Contemporary Arts Limited.
Thanks Lord Provost, nominate for Dundee Contemporary Arts councillor McHugh.
Item B, Leisure and Culture Dundee.
Yeah, nominate Bailey Keenan. Disagreed? Thank you. Roger.
Item C, Dundee Partnership Climate Change Net Zero Strategic Leadership Group.
Councillor McIrvin. Nominate councillor Scullin. Thank you. Disagreed? Thank you. Roger.
Item three, appointment to local review body. Local review body, deputed convener and member. On a reference to article two-one of the minute of meeting of this council on nineteenth August twenty twenty-four, it is reported that there is a vacancy on the above body which falls to be filled by a member of the major opposition group. The council's instructions are requested as to the filling of these vacancies.
Thank you. Councillor McIrvin. Nominate councillor McHugh.
Councillor McHugh. Disagreed?
Thank you. Roger.
It has also become clear in light of recent experience that it will be necessary to expand the pool of trained substitutes. The council are therefore request to appoint one further member of the administration group and one further member of the opposition as additional trained substitutes. If nominations are not available this evening, please could they be intimated to me as soon as possible as the next meeting of the local review body takes place in December?
Bailey Dawson.
Well, thanks Lord Provost, councillor Hunter for our nomination, please.
Okay. Councillor McIrvin, nominate councillor Shears. Thank you. Disagreed? Thank you.
With the balance of City Council.
One further item, Lord Provost.
Apologies, Lord Provost, I was a little ahead of myself there for the substitute myself.
Thank you, Lord Provost, and may I express my gratitude to the administration and the Labour group for their nominations. The final item of business this evening, item four, appointment to licensing committee, licensing committee member. On a reference to article two-one of the minute of meeting of this council of nineteenth August twenty twenty-four, it is reported that there is a vacancy on the above committee which requires to be filled by a member of the major opposition group. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy.
Thank you. Councillor McIrvin. Lord Provost assisting at councillor Shears. Thank you. Disagreed? Thank you everyone. Skip.
Hello, welcome to the meeting of the Climate Environment and Biodiversity Committee. I'm being asked to remind people that if they want to ask questions, can they please put their comments in the chat and not raise their hands? But I'll hand over to, I think it would be Veronica, is that correct?
Thank you convener. Item one, declaration of interest, are there any declarations?
I can see no declarations, if you could take us to the next item.
Item two, take pride in your city campaign, this report is for noting.
So item two is the regular update from the Take Pride in Your City campaign. We're basically asking members to note the highlights of the campaign over the last couple, the last year and to remit to the, to Tony Boyle, the, to implement the two-year action plan. The key thing to note here is we're having a change of emphasis, so we are going to be focusing on taking pride in your community in the next two years. The appendix gives a full list of actions that are proposed and the highlights are on the first two pages. I can see that I have a comment and question from Bailey McPherson.
Thanks very much convener, there's a lot of good information in this and I think we can all take, take pride frankly in the efforts of volunteers across the city, all the people that take part in litter picks and other community activity which is to be much commended. We will continue to reiterate our concerns about the state of the streetscape and the loss of establishment within the streetscape since twenty fifteen and we will continue to reflect that in revenue budget amendments going forward. The issue I think will be revisited after the next council election in twenty twenty-seven, however, let's stick to the positive and say that there's a lot of very good information in the Take Pride in Your City strategy. But I do have a question and that is around the information on page seven and eight. And it's about the actions regarding, for example, explore litter Lotto app for Dundee schools, roll out community litter picking hubs and it's the dates that are mentioned in relation to these. I presume that's not when these are starting, I can't see how it could be because they're all some particular time off. For example, partner with Leisure and Culture Dundee Sports Clubs, not until August twenty twenty-six. Explore litter Lotto app for Dundee schools, not for another year yet, November twenty twenty-five. Is that the point at which the success of these is going to be reviewed as opposed to when the action is actually going to start?
Thank you Bailey McPherson, I'll seek clarification from Tony Boyle on that, I know that we have rolled out a number of the community litter picking hubs, so I think this is a conclusion of the activity rather than a start date, but I'll ask Mr Boyle to confirm.
Thanks convener, thanks Bailey McPherson. Yeah, I can confirm these are dates where we've hoped to see and we will see substantive actions being completed, if not significant progress at that time, thanks.
Okay, thank you, I've also got a question from Bailey Scott.
I wanted to ask about the key campaign highlights in respect of the beach award for, for Brody Ferry Beach. On the city governance agenda included in the list of items you'd like to consult on, on possible savings, one of them is the seasonal lifeguarding at Brody Ferry Beach. Now, there's a load of reasons why that should remain at Brody Ferry Beach, but one of the key pillars of the beautiful Scotland award is safety, so I wondered what impact it would be on the council continuing to win that award if we remove the lifeguarding provision there.
Thank you Bailey Scott, as you know, these are officer proposals, they're not decisions of the council, so they'll be taken into account by all of us when we get to the budget. I don't know if Mr Boyle would like to comment?
Thanks convener, thanks Bailey Scott, no, it wouldn't be appropriate to comment on that specific issue around what's coming up later on at a future committee tonight. But what I can see is that we have got provision in terms of additional signage and other mitigations that would be put in place should that issue be taken forward at some point in the future.
Thank you, Mr Boyle. As you said, it's not appropriate to comment on the budget proposals at this point, I'd like to bring in the leader next.
Thank you convener, I think it goes to say this is a very well presented report.
Thank you, convener, I think it goes to say this is a very well presented report, a very welcome report. All the good work that's been done across the city with the Take Pride in Your City campaign. And I'm really quite glad to see the refreshment of the campaign in sections five point one, five point two, with the focus being on the community and taking pride in the community being the forefront of what the discussions are. Could I maybe get some feedback from Mr Boyle as to when these would start? And when we would see some community activities, especially with the, the schools, the clubs, the businesses and residents all participating and being a partner for the city.
Thanks convener, thanks councillor Flynn. There's been significant progress already made in a number of these actions and this next two-year phase takes us towards this increased emphasis as councillor Flynn has identified around Take Pride in Your Community. The council has done a lot of leading on this project so far and indeed befired quarterly meetings with the private sector, for example. We're looking to extend that, we're looking to do more in the schools and we will be doing more in the schools. But the, the emphasis in this next two-year phase is getting other partners to do the effort. So I can please to confirm to councillor Flynn that no, there's already progress being made, but we will build on that progress for the next two years. Thanks convener.
So I can't leave this without just celebrating some real achievements. And done, Bonny Dundee was basically representing the whole of Scotland in the Royal Horticultural Society Awards, the Britain in Bloom finals in, in August twenty, a month ago in August twenty twenty four. And we came second with a silver gilt. And there's also a new award as part of those awards, which was about health and wellbeing. And Nine Wells Community Garden are the first winners and recipients of that award. So it was a great achievement. And we've also held on to the rise sustainability award. So I hope people are happy to note, oh, sorry, we've got a late comment from councillor Short.
Sorry, convener, I actually took part in a litter picket at the weekend there with some dads and girls. I think there was a couple of boys in there as well from Showcase the Street. And it has to be said, we were absolutely delighted because we were sent in the direction of Baxter Park and they struggled to find anything, so there was good compliments there. But the streets on the way up and the way back were a little bit messier. But the really good thing was that these young people by the end of it were sort of turning it around and saying, actually, why is that litter there? It's not why we're picking it up, it's like, why is the litter there? And I think that's the whole point of getting out and getting our young people to have a think about it. I know I'd still get a clip around the ear if I drop litter, so I'm not advocating that for sure. But just a wee kind of thought about what you're doing, it was probably make a big difference because at the end of the day, the council's not your mum. And we should be able to put it in our pocket or our handbag and take it home. We've all got shopping bags nowadays because we go out and don't want to pay five pence or thirty pence for a shopping bag. So let's be better citizens across the whole of the city and have a really Bonny Dundee.
Yeah, so as Mr Boyle says, the whole, the whole focus here is on behaviour change, it's not the bin man that made the mess. And so involving everybody in that, is everyone happy to note this report? And remit Mr Boyle to get on with the next two years, thank you. Can we get the next item, please, Veronica?
Item three, Dundee Local Heat and Energy Efficiency Strategy, LHE's Delivery Plan. This report is for your approval.
So you will remember that back in April this year, we approved the local heat and energy efficiency strategy. I'd just like to say to Mr, Mrs May that the climate environment group are competing with children and families on acronyms. And so we've approved the local heat and energy efficiency strategy and this is the first delivery plan and seeing how we will implement this over five years, it will be reviewed at two years. And it basically has a huge amount of detail about the energy improvements. We're intending to take the decarbonisation of heat, how we're going to tackle fuel, fuel poverty and who we're going to work with. On page sixty-six, there is a list of thirty-nine actions that will enable us to deliver this and we have a member of staff who will be helping us implement this. And I'm going to bring in councillor Creighton, who's got a question.
Thank you, convener, my question is around actually delivering the plan because it is a lot of detail, as you say. But it's around page fifty-three indicates that twenty twenty-eight and twenty thirty-three targets for all private rented and owners occupied properties to reach energy efficiency EPC level or C or above. As the current baseline performance is just fifty-one percent and forty-two respectively, are officers confident that these target dates are achievable? And particularly the twenty twenty-eight target for private rented properties?
Thank you councillor Creighton, the EPC ratings currently under review by the Scottish government, there's going to be a new housing standard. Like you, I'm losing sleep about what we're meant to do here and how much we have to do. And basically, the point of this plan is to be much more explicit about the targets so that we can actually begin to quantify them, work out how many properties. And there's a lot of proposals, there's proposals as part of the action plan to actually have a dedicated strategy for dealing with the private sector. And but I'm happy to bring in, I think it would be Barbara who would bring in to add it into my comments.
Thank you, yes, as councillor Anderson has said, all of these targets are under review. And we should have new targets in place within the year linked to the heating buildings bill and the social housing net zero strategy. So we will obviously be reviewing these targets in light of the, the new measures and targets that are going to be introduced by the Scottish government. And we will obviously then have a programme of delivery to meet those targets accordingly. But we have set our delivery against the heating buildings strategy and the targets set out in that as required by the local heat and energy efficiency strategy methodology.
Councillor Creighton, you wish you need to come back?
No, it's just obviously I'm concerned by, the, the detail's great, but it's how we're going to do that. And so I look forward to seeing how we all go about this because obviously it's, it's not points scoring, I think we all want to achieve this, it's how we do it. So I look forward to seeing that.
I completely agree, and I think the officers will confirm, I spend my life saying, when are we putting a spade in the ground? And where's the money? And so, yeah, we're very aware of the scale of this, it's good to start going from the big scale aspirations to the detailed plan. Now we need to monitor every step of the delivery. And are people happy to approve this report? Oh, sorry. Right, and you bring in the leader, sorry.
Sorry, convener, thank you for that. And it's just raised a question with regards to the partnership model we're actually looking to do within the lease itself. And maybe get some comments from officers with regards to district heating or heat networks? And what partnerships maybe being sort of energised in that sense with regards to going forward for these type of networks within the city?
Councillor Flynn, I'll bring in Barbara Whiting again at that point. I'll bring in Robyn first, no.
I mean, right, I'm concerned that we are continually exploring different district heating opportunities, including conversations with various partners within the city. It is extremely challenging to come up with proposals which are commercially viable. And I think inevitably, these do depend on the level of grant which can be provided by Scottish government as well as technical constraints. And we remain hopeful that at some point in the future, we will be able to develop one or more district heating schemes in, in Dundee. There is of course one at the University of Dundee that's powered by fossil fuels, I understand, rather than a renewable energy source. But we do monitor and engage very often with Scottish government just to find out what their intentions are. But at the minute, obviously, financial resources are tight. I'll just hand over to Barbara Whiting as the team leader in charge of sustainability, in case she's anything to add.
Thank you. And, yeah, as Mr Presswood said, there is limited funding, but we have secured some support to do some development work. So as would be expected, we outline five prioritised heat network zones in our LHE's strategy document. So we're taking that piece of work forward now by doing a greater detailed assessment of those five prioritised heat network zones, particularly the city centre zone. And we'll also be progressing with a piece of work to look at the analysis of heat network delivery models. Those pieces of work are due to be completed in the spring.
Are people happy to approve this report? Thank you, Veronica.
Item four, Public Bodies Climate Change Duties, Annual Report twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. This report is for noting.
As you know, at this committee, we like giving you very detailed technical reports that go on for hundreds of pages. And so this is the annual duties report, which we send to the Scottish government every year. And the good news is that our emissions are fifty-five point five percent down from the baseline. The worrying news is that they increased last year and there are reasons for those increases. And I can see that councillor Coleman has a question, so I'll bring him in first.
Thank you, convener. The transport sector emission levels reported on page hundred twenty-seven are quite concerning. They show a thirty-four point four percent increase in emissions compared to twenty-two, twenty-three. And the business travel emissions increase is very significant. Whilst I assume much of this can be traced to the recovery from the pandemic period, can officers please indicate the steps that are being taken to try to turn around these emission figures going forward?
I will bring in Mr Presswood on that question.
I'm afraid I can't hear Mr Presswood.
Mr McNorton, the head of sustainable transportation and votes is also in the, in, in St Chambers tonight, so I'll ask him to come in. But there, there is good progress, as many members are aware, within the city council's own fleet. Scottish government policy does require us to support a reduction of all public transport miles who, which will facilitate this, but Mr McNorton?
Yeah, thank you. The, there's levels of interventions being planned and being deployed at both a national level, a regional level and also a local level. From a national level, Scottish government are working on a roadmap to twenty percent car number to reduction by twenty thirty, which outlines a range of different interventions to promote public transport and other forms of mobility as well. And from a regional and local level, both aligned, as noted in our Sustainable Transport Delivery Plan, which the committee approved last year. And we do have a range of interventions to promote and provide betterment to sustainable forms of transport, including shared mobility, active travel and also public transport.
Councillor Coleman, are you happy with that response?
Yes, thank you, convener.
I think the key thing here is we know that the real issue is the shift from natural gas onto decarbonised heat and solutions is part of the bigger picture. We've got a huge amount of work to do. The numbers here are the numbers, they have to be reported, so I'm just asking people to note this report at this stage. I'm happy, I think that's the business for tonight's committee.
Thank you, and welcome to the Fair Work Economic Growth and Infrastructure Committee. Veronica, can you please start us off?
Thank you. Item one, declaration of interest, are there any declarations?
Do you see any declarations in the room? No.
Thank you. A request has been received for a deputation in respect of item three on the agenda. Does the committee agree to hear the deputation?
Okay, I think that's a yes, so we'll go to, to item three, but Bailey McPherson, sorry, you have a point of order?
I do indeed have a point of order and perhaps Mr Many could keep me right on this. It is our group's intention to move deferral of that particular report. And I'm wondering if in terms, Mr Many will know better than I, if it would be appropriate to take that deferral before putting a deputation through, making the deputation, if you know what I mean? Because obviously, where that deferral agreed, we would be hearing it at a slightly later date. I, I, I would obviously, if we were moving the fellow, I would explain why that were the case. I, I'll defer to Mr, Mr Many's advice.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson, if you'd like me to get the items, I've been asked Mr Many to make a statement. But Mr Many, could you please come in now, please?
Thank you, convener, and thank you, Bailey McPherson. My advice to the committee would be that if there is a motion for deferral to be moved, it would be appropriate to hear from Bailey McPherson first and for the committee to decide that matter before they proceeded, if necessary, to hear the deputation.
Thank you for that clarity, Mr Many. And I believe there was an issue with committee services as well, I wonder if you'd be able to comment this time, please?
Thank you again, convener. With apologies, I wish to end to me that the letters of representation, which ought to have been sent to elected members at an earlier date, were not sent to elected members until the weekend. I apologise for the delay in sending those letters and action will be taken to ensure that that situation does not recur in future.
Thank you, Mr Many, assuming that you're still proceeding with your referral, Bailey McPherson, I would be moving on that advice straight to a vote then, because I will not be accepting the deferral. Bailey McPherson?
Thanks, could I just give an indication as to why I would be moving deferral? Mr Many is quite right, mistakes happen and I think we all accept that. And the, the reason you got the deferral, the representation letters on Saturday was that I emailed the head of Sustainable Transport and Roads in terms of reading the report again on Saturday morning. And by four thirty that day, the letters of representation had indeed finally been sent out. Now, there's a couple of points regarding that. Fifty-five pages of representations and a very, very short time in which to consider them. And I should say that councillor Duncan, having read these, agrees with the comments on one. And if the feral was not agreed to, he would, I would, I would just note that he would move an amendment in relation to that, should this be heard tonight. However, we think that the length of time to consider the letters of representation is inadequate. But also, there are two other points, I think, that mean a deferral, and I'm talking about a short deferral. But the, but, and having spoken with Mr Many this afternoon, I think this could come back in December or in January. And obviously, that's for the officers to determine. There are two other reasons for a deferral. One is, in four point four, there's a lack of adequate explanation as to why representations have actually been rejected. They are rejected, but there's not actually an explanation for each particular site as to why it should be rejected. And I think, in all fairness to those people who have made representations, I think it's important that the particular situation at each site is actually referred to before an officer recommendation blanket, if you like, is given. We would also point out that in four point five, eleven representations for further streets have simply been rejected on cost grounds rather than the merits or demerits of these particular cases. So for that reason, we feel that the matter should be deferred tonight. One, for the representation period, for there to be adequate time to consider the fifty-five pages of representations. But secondly, in order that when the report comes back, four point four and four point five are expanded. So the officers, and I'm sure they have looked into these, but I think it would, in fairness to committee members, be useful if these were detailed for each of the representations for further streets and for that matter, for the removal of exemptions in some cases to be considered. So with that, I would move the feral at this stage, thank you, convener.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson, I can see that councillor Duncan is going to second your deferral. Councillor Duncan, do you want to speak to that? Councillor Duncan, do you want to speak to that?
Only briefly, Convia. I think Bailey McPherson's covered all our concerns, certainly. And it's not to prejudice the decision on any application, one way or the other. Our concern really is that, you know, we've had very, well, the whole committee has had very little time indeed to actually go through all the huge number of representations received. And to have no specific reasons explained to us and indeed those who made these representations as to why something's not been taken up. I think to do this whole subject justice, I would agree with Bailey McPherson that what we would seek to do is simply to achieve tonight a short deferral. As Bailey McPherson says, you know, we'd be looking to deal with this sooner rather than later, but not tonight, because we've simply not had enough time as a committee to do the matter justice.
Thanks very much, councillor Duncan. Can see that councillor Duncan has a question for officers. Do you want to come in just now?
Thanks, convenor. Can you just confirm with Mr. Many, it's okay to ask a question of officers at this stage? So I confirm that would be perfectly in order, convenor.
Thank you, Mr. Many. Councillor Flynn?
Thanks, convenor. Just raising the points of what's been raised with four point four, four point five. Can I maybe get some comments from head of transportation with regards to the comments made and clarify some of the detail within what's been written in four point four, four point five? Let me start.
Mr. McNorton, please.
Yeah, thank you, convenor, and thank you, councillor Flynn. With respect to the, the representations which were received, we've summarized them in paragraph four point six of the report, which is our usual practice for traffic regulation orders, rather than trying to respond to fifty five pages in the committee report. With regard to the specifics around the representations which were made for further streets or expansion of the extents which were included in the order, as noted in paragraph four point five, we can't add on either additional extents or new streets to the order. That will require a new order. So that's why they weren't taken forward within this order, because we can't. In respect of the assessment process, just to reflect back to the beginning of last year when we started this process, we did a consultant assessment of the entire street network for roads which should be eligible in the legislation, which determined the list, which was then consulted on with stakeholders, including the emergency services, bus operators, and also elected members. We had two briefing sessions with elected members in April. We did receive quite a number of responses from that consultation back in. We took those views on board, adapted the list that was presented to the committee on the twenty fifth of September. And the list that was presented to committee on twenty fifth of September was unanimously approved without any extensions to extents being requested. I do appreciate that the representations have requested further extents to be added. And again, I'm happy to provide detail on any of the particular locations that I have done in the interim with some of the members. However, we can't add in new extents to this order. That will require a new order. And again, if members wish, we can bring back another order for either extended areas or new streets.
Mr. Flynn?
Yeah, thanks, and thanks, Mr. McNorton, for clarifying. I could just clarify also that for the report that came on the twenty fifth of September, twenty twenty three, there was approaches made by elected members and modifications and amendments were made at that time following the officers reviewing the proposals originally.
Yep, thank you. That is correct. The, we did act on and consult with elected members. We did make modifications to the order before it was presented to committee. When it was taken to committee, the committee did actually decide to remove further four streets from the order as well. So there were modifications made to the order that was approved on the twenty fifth of September.
Thanks very much for the additional clarity for that, Mr. McNorton, and for, again, illuminating on four point five that it's more a question of process rather than a question of cost. Bailey McPherson, I can see you've got another question. I was just going to move to the vote, but I will let you come back in.
Just very briefly, I hear what Mr. McNorton's saying about adding to the order and the potential for a further order. Can I just be quite clear? There are quite clearly, and given the very short timeframe, it has been difficult to work out the merits or otherwise of some of the requests for additional streets. But can I just be quite clear? What is actually the process now going forward? And into the future, for that matter? Can a member of the public, for example, because of a change of circumstance in a particular street, make representations in the future, or indeed an elected member, in relation to future orders into the future going forward?
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. Mr. McNorton?
Thank you, convenor. So as I mentioned in the committee, the previous committee, when the report, when the order, draft order was approved on the twenty fifth of September last year, officers haven't identified any further locations which we recommend for exemption. And again, that follows on from consultation with the emergency services, bus operators, and other stakeholders. That said, when we came up with the original list, we said we would review it following introduction of enforcement which commenced in February this year. Following commencement over the last six months, we haven't identified any other locations which we recommend, the criteria for or requirement for pavement parking exemption. So officers don't recommend any further sites. That said, members of the public or elected members can inquire about further exemptions and will provide the assessment information in relation to those locations sought to advise why we've come up with that determination. And again, it will ultimately be for the committee to decide whether or not they wish for any other exemption locations to be made, which can be.
Just to be clear then, Mr. McNorton, because what, what you appear to be saying is, well, that's it. But just to be clear, if a member of the public feels the situation has changed or that a particular street should have been included at some point in the future, they can contact the department. You said it's for the committee to decide, but how does the committee actually do that unless officers actually bring forward a further order? I just want to be clear what the process is for the Dundee public going forward, should some years perhaps even down the line, a community want a particular change in relation to an exemption or the removal of an exemption?
I think we could have discussed this as part of the item, but I will let you get that answer by Mr. McNorton, and then I'll bring in councillor Short, and then we'll move to the vote. Mr. McNorton?
Thank you, convenor. Yeah, without having a crystal ball, it's hard to tell what's going to happen in the future. And again, officers will take on board any changes which do occur through developments or changes in driver parking behaviour and so forth. So we will always keep an open mind going into the future. While officers at this time don't recommend any further exemptions, members can raise further exemption requests as a member item.
Thank you. Councillor Short?
It's actually been answered by Mr. McKeown, so thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move to the vote at this stage. I believe that councillor Tolland has already formally seconded me and doesn't wish to illuminate further, so that's fine. So Veronica, grateful for the vote, please.
Thank you. The motion by the convenor and seconded by councillor Tolland is that the report be not deferred. The amendment by Bailey McPherson and seconded by councillor Duncan is that the report be deferred. Convenor?
Motion.
Councillor Anderson?
Motion.
Councillor Black?
Motion.
Lord Provost Campbell?
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Cordell?
Motion.
Bailey Dawson?
The motion.
Councillor Flynn?
Motion.
Councillor Hunter?
Motion.
Councillor Lind?
Motion.
Councillor Mills?
Motion.
Bailey Roberts?
Motion.
Bailey Sors?
Motion.
Councillor Short? The motion, please. Councillor Smith?
Motion.
Councillor Tolland?
Motion.
Bailey Keenan?
Amendment.
Councillor Finnegan?
Amendment.
Councillor McKeown?
Amendment.
Councillor McArvin?
Amendment.
Bailey Wright?
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson?
The amendment.
Councillor Coleman?
The amendment.
Councillor Crichton?
Amendment.
Councillor Duncan?
Amendment.
Bailey Scott?
Amendment.
So that's fifteen for the motion and ten for the amendment. So there are motions carried and the report is not deferred.
Thank you very much, Veronica. So as we shall be very aware, this item is providing a summary of the responses received to pavement parking exemption orders publicly noticed and seeks approval to proceed with the order with the admission of Brantwood Avenue. Can I confirm that the deputation is online, Veronica?
Deputation is present in the building, convenor.
The deputation present. Just confirm that you've got seven minutes for your deputation and just proceed whenever you're able. If you're able to come on the podium, that'll be helpful for members of them to hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, convenor. The following comments are made on behalf of the Dundee Local Access Forum, known as BROW, biking, riding, and walking. The members of the group spent a large amount of time assessing these proposed exemptions in great detail, both by multiple site visits and by scrutiny on Google Street View. We also studied the innumerable documents, the Act itself, of course, and also the Jacobs Report, various items of guidance and other material. And out of this research, we produced a ten-page report, which we submitted. One of the items which has been mentioned in the previous comments, one of the many representations that were made. In this, in this document, we identified four fundamental principles. Protection of, first, the protection of vulnerable people. This, of course, is the key stated aim of the Act, that footways are to be kept clear to allow equal access for people who are disadvantaged in mobility for one reason or another. And disadvantage is the crux of the matter. There are basic equality issues here, which I think, we think have been passed over and which demand further exploration and exposition. Secondly, safety. Safety is about more than the mere technicalities of car parking. It's about how the users of pavements feel about the situations with which they are faced. Very close proximity to vehicles can be very intimidating. And it's not necessarily mitigated very much by the drawing of white lines. Safety, I think, is in the eye of the beholder. Thirdly, absolutely necessary. The Act provides this basic principle that exemptions should only be deployed in areas where it is absolutely necessary to do so. We have highlighted in our report a substantial number of locations where we feel exemptions have not been proven to be absolutely necessary. One example is St. Kilda Road. I myself visited this location twice, once walking the entire length of the street, and on the second occasion, travelled on a bus. On the sections where the cars were parked on the carriageway, there was no problem with the bus negotiating the street, suggesting that the need to park on the pavement on the other section where the roadway is the same width was unnecessary. There are numerous other examples highlighted in our report where the roadway is of a similar sufficiency, sufficient width to bear the greater burden of parked vehicles. And fourthly, minimum footway. This is, this is stated as being a minimum, and anything less shouldn't be accepted. One point five meters should be, not be seen just as the pedestrians' equal share of public space. Pedestrians are marginal anyway. And we shouldn't, excuse me, sorry, we shouldn't be making them more marginal. There are three examples in this, come into this category. Merton Road, there's only one footway on Merton Road. Parking on the pavement renders it unusable so that people, pedestrians, people with buggies, wheelchair users, or anybody has to take to the road, to the street, which has the additional hazard of having a cobbled surface. Similar considerations apply to Long Lane and Brothie Ferry, wherein sections, there's only one footway, sometimes hardly one point five meters. And parked cars reduce this to an unacceptable level. Again, the road is cobbled and not suitable for people with the greatest mobility needs. And thirdly, Forfar Road, adequate pavement space can't be maintained here either if parking is allowed on the footway. These three streets are totally inappropriate for exemptions. There are some locations where the proposed exemptions are at odds with other guidance and practice. We've pointed out that the shared use designation on the Arbrough Road will be invalidated with implications for the cycle network as the path will no longer meet minimum cycling by design guidelines. There's sufficient width on the Arbrough Road for carriageway parking, and some people indeed do park in that way. And the report makes no reference to displacement opportunities. We identified a number of these, we think are significant. For example, at Happy Hillack Road, Fintree Road, Brothie Ferry Road. So in conclusion, the Local Access Forum is extremely disappointed in the response, not just to our submission, but to all the others who have bothered to have a say on this matter. The attempt in four six to summarize the received responses is not an adequate summary at all. And certainly in our case, given that we, given the time we took and the amount of documentation we provided, giving some quite fine but important details in doing so. We would therefore urge the council not to accept this report as it stands, that it be revised as follows. The exemptions for Merton Road, Long Lane, and Forfar Road be removed. The examples we have highlighted where carriageway space is sufficient for parking and makes pavement parking unnecessary be revisited and revised. And finally, the primary emphasis in the legislation is to protect those members of the society who are most vulnerable, most disadvantaged in terms of mobility. There is an imbalance in mobility opportunities, and for this reason, it's vital that an equality assessment be carried out on the exemption proposals.
Thank you very much for your deputation and for keeping to time. I'll invite, if you could please stay elected for questions from members, if that's all right? But if you could just stay there, members may have questions for your deputation. Councillor Short, I believe you're first.
Good afternoon, sir. Sorry, I didn't catch your name. I don't know if you said it, but good afternoon and thank you for your patience and waiting. And thank you that we got to hear you. And I guess, as individual councillors, many of us have looked at our own wards. And I did so myself and also used my own lived experience. Within the Woodside area, currently, we have a bus that can run around there. And if it weren't exempt, we probably wouldn't have the opportunity to have the bus because it wouldn't be able to get up and down those streets. And you talked about the times that you had taken out. And I just wondered, did you look at night versus day? Because obviously, very different characteristics in streets, night versus day. And I mean, number one is the protection of vulnerable people, and I completely get that. But those who live within the Woodside area, who are my constituents, many of them are vulnerable due to the fact that they can't afford a car. And so we have to keep that bus running for them. So I guess one of the dimensions also is the socioeconomic vulnerability as well as sites, wheelchairs, prams, et cetera. And ultimately, we live in a society and a city that wasn't built for the cars that we have. Anecdotally, my brother always writes to me to complain about the traffic. Anecdotally, my brother always writes to me to complain about the traffic and he's got four cars because there's four adults in this family and I keep saying to him, you are the traffic. And if we continue on working towards that sort of bright future where we don't all have to have cars, then ideal and Dundee goes back to the way it was. But currently, some compromise has to be made. And is that something that came into your thinking when it comes to this? The compromise between the social, economic vagrances within the city for those who require the bus and also in many of the areas where you need a requirement for ambulances, et cetera, to get into the roads and move around?
I didn't want to give the impression that, or rather I should correct the impression if it has been given that our submission was a load of objections to everything. In fact, we qualified many of the, many of the situations. We had a kind of nuanced view of it. I visited these streets, Cairns View, Woodside, probably at least three times. I wandered around bemused by the chaos of vehicles, bins, buses, lorries, everything. And I could, we didn't come out one way or another in saying there shouldn't be any cars on the pavements. And compromise indeed seemed to be the only way to deal with that particular situation. And I think that it needs to be ongoing, to be examined and if possible, other parking facilities improved. But I accept what you say that this is one in which, this is a very, I would have said perhaps for me, it was the most difficult one of the whole lot. And I accept what you say that some measure of compromise is essential in that location.
Thanks very much. Is that okay? Is that answer councillor Short?
I was just going to say, I knew that this was coming because it's been a long time. That was one of the ones that I really wanted to happen because I've seen palms in the street. But I did have to use my own understanding of it and compromise like you say. So thank you for confirming that sir.
Thank you very much. I've got councillor Flynn with a question as well for you.
Thank you. Thank you for the deputation. Just before I ask officers the same question, I just want to know what your interaction with the officers was? And did you have an opportunity to put all your views across as you have done tonight as well currently?
Yes, we had, we had a meeting in Brody Ferry Library with one of the officials. And I also attended a meeting with some of the officials in, not here, in the other council offices. And there have been innumerable email communications and questions and comments and discussion along the way.
Thanks very much. I've got a final question from councillor Black, please.
Got some sympathy with what you've said about St Kilda Road. There's quite a number of off-street parking spaces on St Kilda Road that people could be using rather than parking on the pavement. And it's not that wide. But my question is really more general. Would you prefer that we stopped, we need to make, we need to allow access for ambulances, fire engines, all of that. And one way to do that is exempt them from the pavement parking ban. Another way would be yellow lines, which would you prefer?
I'm not sure it's an either or. I think yellow lines are, yeah, yellow lines are okay or necessary, but I think I have to look at the pavement parking thing in itself and not balance it against yellow lines. Because I think pavements are spaces that people need and that people need to move about in. And I think that is basic and fundamental. And it's primary, it takes place, it's placed before the question of yellow lines, I think. And we need to look at it and not be, we need to look at it as the primary focus and not lose our focus on this essential need that people have to have space for moving around.
Thanks very much for your deposition. There's no other questions from members, so thank you again. We'll move to questions to officers. Councillor Flynn, please.
Yeah, thanks convenor. Just going back to the deputation, which is very helpful and understanding the proposals he's put forward. I just want to get officers' views and comments on the ten page report that was mentioned within the deputation. And going back to reference four point four four five again within the report and how that was addressed. And bearing in mind that again, twenty twenty-three in September, this committee unanimously agreed after a number of debates, I think, or questions on the night with regards to the pavements for people, as was being mentioned tonight. And just understanding that full context, if you may, we've got some detail with regards to the report that was presented to you and how you came about even it's not really relevant to the committee as in refusing the report itself tonight.
Thank you. Mr McNaughton?
Yep, thank you councillor Flynn. First thing I would say is that it was a very thorough, comprehensive and well-written report. And there was very little that we disputed within the report. What I would say is that they were foreseen objections and they were foreseen through the consultation process when the legislation was drafted and acknowledges the fact that it is a difficult balance. Dundee does have the highest proportion of flattered antenna properties in Scotland, fifty percent. And again, there's without access to off-street parking. Car use, car ownership has risen in the last decade as well and there are a lot of very, very congested streets. The balance that I think we've struck, and again, I would say that was in conjunction with consultation with stakeholders and also assessment of the entire road network at less than one percent of the footway network proposed for exemption, which was approved by committee, meets that balance. Some of the locations which Mr Gammock mentioned in his deputation there, good examples, Merton Road and Long Lane have been two. They're quite heavily congested streets in terms of parking because of the lack of available on-street parking space. And that is one of the primary reasons why there was sought for inclusion through the consultation and assessment process. Yes, there is a balance between keeping footways accessible, but also the accessibility of people to actually be able to access their cars and that knock-on displacement effect. Certainly with Merton Road, the next nearest realistic available place to park could be Ancrum Road, which is already quite congested at certain times of the day. Likewise, Long Lane, again, it would move further pressure on to New House Road, sorry, New Road, which we've already heard tonight. And then further afield on to Brook Street and King Street, which are all very highly congested as well. So there isn't an easy solution to this. And again, I think we've met a balance in terms of the extent of exemptions which are proposed being less than one percent of the footway network in Dundee.
Thank you, Mr McNaughton. I believe it's councillor McHugh next.
Thank you. Excuse me. There's been talk about balance. Can I just say pavements are for people. Safe access for pedestrians, wheelchair and pram users and people with visual impairments is already significantly impacted by ever-increasing pavement furniture, grit bins and euro bins and the deteriorating condition of our pavement surfaces. I think it's important to remember that pavements are for people. The national ban on pavement parking introduced by legislation was designed to make it easier for local authorities to ensure that pavements and roads are safer and more accessible for all. The act has as its key aim to improve accessibility for vulnerable road users by allowing walkers and wheelers the ability to use footways and dropped kerbs without being impeded by parked vehicles. As already mentioned by the deputation, the proposed exemptions at Merton Road and Long Lane, Brody Ferry are particularly relevant. Pavement space is already at a premium in both of these streets. So walkers, wheelchair users and pram pushers will be forced onto a cobbled street to avoid parked cars. I have no idea how sight impaired people will manage. If these exemptions are agreed according to that list, how will that key aim of improving accessibility for vulnerable groups be realised by this local authority?
Thank you councillor McHugh. I believe that was the question from Mr McNaughton in terms of, was it directed to Mr McNaughton, sorry, Dorothy, or did say it was a question? Yep.
Thank you convenor. Thank you for the question councillor McHugh. And as already been noted by councillor Short tonight, a number of the roads, all of the roads that feature in the exemption order are historically evolved roads, actual and designed for car use at all, which does make it very, very challenging. In terms of the aims and objectives of the legislation, I would note that over ninety-nine percent of the footways in Dundee, if this was approved, would still be subject to footway parking prohibition and enforcement. The majority of the road network is not included in this exemption order. I have already mentioned displacement aspects of this as well with moving the problem. And again, for the residents, there is a mix about accessibility, so there's accessibility of the footpath and then there's also accessibility to access car, which is important for a number of, a number of our citizens in terms of distance to access a car if they possibly have mobility problems or again, back in the twenty-fifth of September last year when we were discussing this item, I made reference to the example of a parent with a child and shopping and the distance which they may have to work, walk. Again, Long Lane is an example, if that was exempt, not exempt, the likelihood is that that would displace to King Street or Brook Street, which is already quite congested. I do acknowledge it's a very difficult decision and it's a difficult assessment process. And it is for members to decide whether or not they want to proceed with these exemptions in full or in part. What I would say though is that the recommendations in front of you did follow an extensive assessment process and consultation with stakeholders and members.
Thanks very much, Mr McNaughton. At the risk of repeating what's been said before, I do think that we've already had the principle of exemptions as well as standardship was unanimously supported by committee. So I was going to wrap up, but I can see that councillor Short has a question, so I'll bring in councillor Short.
I was just going to ask a cheeky question. The percentage of pavements that we're talking tonight versus the percentage of pavements prior to the legislation. I mean, ultimately, we're in a great position because we now do have the legislation which covers a huge percentage of the pavements in the city, which your teams will be monitoring and putting out fines where appropriate. Could you tell me what percentage we're talking about today compared to the wider city, please?
Yeah, thank you councillor Short. So the total footway length that's included in the exemption order is eight point two kilometres. That's out of eleven hundred kilometres of footway we have in the city. That's only the adopted footway network. The legislation actually applies to unadopted footpaths. Non-adopted footpaths, paths across parks, parks around car parks, anything that looks like a footpath. It's included in the legislation, which would add on probably another four hundred kilometres on top of that. So it's well under one percent of the footway network.
Thanks very much, Mr McNaughton. My apologies to councillor Duncan, I didn't see you already back in the conversation. So I'll bring you in just now councillor Duncan.
That's okay. Thanks. Thanks convenor. Excuse me. No, my question to Mr McNaughton really is, he will know that my interest really has been with regard to a new road and the parts of which are going to be exempted and parts not. And it's actually confused residents, to put it mildly, who are struggling to understand why in a road with pavements either side, their requests can't be accommodated. Now, a number of them certainly have made representations. I indeed met with several of these residents. And I'm just wondering what engagement took place, if any, between officers and the residents? Because I think people who live there could certainly have shed some light upon why they were making the plea that they have made. And has the decision been, you know, explained to them why it's maybe not going their way?
Mr McNaughton?
Yeah, thank you convenor. Thank you for the question councillor Duncan. The new roads, I do appreciate that residents do park in the centre park between the car park and Long Lane. And the difficulty is it's the turn manoeuvres of vehicles and swept path of vehicles. The junctions of Long Lane and the car park, it would either prohibit access or result in significant overrunning. So again, it's from a practical perspective that it can't be accommodated. I do appreciate that the parking is predominantly around, existing is predominantly around the properties where we're not proposing to have pavement parking exemption. However, we have made allowance in the extent to either side. So at least one street parking will be available within the near vicinity and within the same street as well. And again, it is in recognition the Long Lane and the new roads do have a relationship between them about the displacement of the capacity of parking that you do have on that corner of Brody Ferry.
Thank you very much, Mr McNaughton. Does that answer a question councillor Duncan?
I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't. I mean, I appreciate there's not a perfect answer to any of this, but I think communication and engagement with residents is key. It's a two-way learning process, I would have thought. And certainly when I engage with residents, very often, you know, I have a different way of working at things than I did before.
Thanks councillor Duncan. Bailey Keenan, you come in with a question?
It's really just to try to tease out a bit more the response that councillor McHugh got earlier. If we, as a council, need to look after individuals with protected characteristics such as sight or mobility issues, then what we pass here, if we were to pass this, could it be subject to a court case or a judicial review? You know, how sound are we? You know, we've done a consultation and that might well tick a box. But if someone's affected, would they have the ability to challenge them? So perhaps it's about a joint answer I'm looking for from Mr McNaughton and Mr Many as a legal officer of council.
Thanks very much for the question Bailey Keenan. And my understanding is the exemptions just maintain the status quo, so I'm not sure in terms of legal issues, but I'll bring in Mr Many first, please.
Thank you very much convenor. As elected members will be aware, I'm employed by my duty is to give legal advice to the council. Therefore, I'm not in a position to give legal advice to individual citizens. What I would suggest is if anyone is dissatisfied with the decision that the council has made to take their own independent legal advice as to the options that may be available to them. Thank you.
I suppose the question that I asked though was, could it be subject to a challenge? I'm not looking for the advice as to whether if I decided I wanted to take the council on or I'm just looking how well are we protected from the point of view of, is it something that could potentially be challenged?
Mr Many?
Thank you convenor. I think it would be fair to say that most council decisions could potentially be challenged. Whether or not they could be challenged successfully is a different matter.
Thanks very much. I don't see any further questions, so I'm going to go to the vote on this item. Grateful as answer the deputation from Mr Gammock and all the contributions tonight. I do feel that I'll be moving the recommendations in line of the report. Do I have a second there?
I'll second it.
Thank you. We'll go to the vote please Veronica. Apologies, councillor Duncan, I believe you have an amendment?
Yeah, well spotted convenor, thank you. I think officers have got a copy and I'd be grateful if they could perhaps circulate it.
Sorry, could you repeat that last bit please councillor Duncan?
No, I think officers have got a copy of my amendments. They should do certainly and I'd just be grateful if they could perhaps circulate it. And then I'll speak briefly to it.
Thanks very much. I thought you said something about pot of coffee, which maybe it's just the latest.
No, no, that would be nice at this hour. Okay, so hopefully everybody's got a chance to see it. It's not really a major amendment. It really does relate to new roads. I just, yeah, I've considered it from all angles and I think. I just, yeah, I've considered it from all angles and I really do feel that having, you know, met with residents and I do take on board what Mr McNorton and officers have said. But being very familiar with the ward and having met people there on site, it's quite plain that, you know, there is a pavement either side. Most of new road is already included. To me and certainly to the residents who live there, it just makes no sense not to extend this. And so I'll not detain people further, but I mean, that is my amendment. I know that Bailey McPherson will second me.
Thank you councillor Duncan. Bailey McPherson, do you want to speak to your seconding?
I'll just simply formally second councillor Duncan. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Bailey McPherson. Councillor Flynn?
Thanks, convener. I could just ask Mr McNorton to get some feedback and comment on what the impact of this would be on the area, if any, or on any other aspect?
Mr McNorton?
Yeah, thank you, convener. As already noted tonight and in paragraph four point five of the report, we can't extend the order. What we could do, if committee is minded, is bring a, start a new draft order process for the gap in the extent.
Thanks very much, Mr McNorton. I think I'm going to move in line with what I previously intimated and go for the motion being the proposal before us in committee. And I believe councillor Tolland has formally seconded, so at this stage I will go to the vote.
Convener, sorry to interrupt, but I'd be quite happy to go along with the compromise that Mr McNorton has suggested if others are.
No, I think, thanks very much councillor Duncan, but I think we're just going to proceed. Thank you. Veronica?
Thank you, convener. The motion by the convener and seconded by councillor Tolland is that the report be agreed as submitted. The amendment by councillor Duncan and seconded by Bailey McPherson is as has been circulated. Convenor?
Motion.
Councillor Anderson?
Motion.
Councillor Black?
Motion.
Lord Provost Campbell?
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Cordell?
Motion.
Bailey Dawson?
The motion.
Councillor Flynn?
Motion.
Councillor Hunter?
Motion.
Councillor Lynn?
Motion.
Councillor Mills?
Motion.
Bailey Roberts?
Motion.
Bailey Soares?
Motion.
Councillor Short?
The motion, please.
Councillor Smith?
Motion.
Councillor Tolland?
Motion.
Bailey Keenan?
Motion.
Councillor Finnegan?
Motion.
Councillor McHugh?
Motion.
Councillor McCarvin?
Motion.
Bailey Wright?
Motion.
Bailey McPherson?
The amendment.
Councillor Coleman?
Amendment.
Councillor Creighton?
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan?
Amendment.
Bailey Scott?
Motion.
So that's twenty one for the motion, four for the amendment, so the motion is carried.
Thanks very much, Veronica. Can we go back to the agenda, please?
So we now go back to the main agenda. Item two, recycling improvement fund, household waste recycling centres. This report is for noting.
Thank you. This report is asking committee to note the grant of nearly seven hundred thousand pounds that's been awarded to Dundee City Council from the Scottish Government Recycling Improvement Fund to maximise reused recycling and carry out site upgrades at the city's two recycling centres at Baldi and Riverside. Additionally, to authorise the capital expenditure and sourcing strategy for the improvement works as part of the grant allocation. Grant of six hundred ninety three thousand three hundred eighty three pounds will combine with existing financial contributions towards recycling set out by the council within the capital plan. This will allow for the purchase of additional waste management equipment such as a mobile roll packer, roll and on and roll off containers as well as cardboard compactors. Also set out within the successful grant bid is the inclusion of a community reuse hub to be constructed at Riverside Household Waste Recycling Centre. Bailey McPherson?
Thanks, convener. Mainly just to welcome this grant award from Zero Waste Scotland. I know that officers will not comment on the detail of the item that will be later before us, item four of the city governance committee in relation to the budget consultation. But wouldn't it be a dreadful irony if as a result of the budget yet to be determined, one of the suggestions from officers in relation to the recycling centres, which would see the summer hours reduced, took place? Because we improved the facilities and then closed them earlier, which would be a terrible irony. But without wishing to dwell on that aspect because it may not come to pass, hopefully not, I would just say I do welcome the grant award, which is indeed very welcome for our recycling centres. Thank you, convener.
Thanks very much, Bailey McPherson. Positive comments. I know it. I don't see anyone else looking to come in at this point. So, you know, gratefully noted again and everyone is presumably welcoming this report. Thanks very much. Move on, please, Veronica.
So item three has already been considered. Item four, sourcing strategies by the head of design and property. This report is for your approval.
Pardon if I jumped the gum there, testing my voice tonight. This is item six approval, as has just been intimated, of seven sourcing strategies to commence with a procurement exercise for each work stream. The strategies contained in the report comprise the demobilisation and removal of temporary classrooms at Braveview Academy, inspection, testing and maintenance for air handling ductwork, inspection, testing and maintenance for smoke ventilation systems, replacement of the nurse call system at Janet Groffham House, replacement of underfloor heating components and controls at Haras and North East Campus Schools and phase four rewiring works at Barnhill Primary School. And just on that personally, before we move to questions and comments, really pleased to see that the first one, the demobilisation and removal of temporary classrooms, it was one of the first things we dealt with when I first joined the council and it seems it's just, it's finally come full circle and that's due to the, obviously the works on the new school. So very pleased to see that coming forward. Bailey McPherson, again, you've got a comment and an amendment.
It's more an amendment, sorry. Sorry, the comment relates to the previous, the previous item. It's simply an amendment and it's just in terms of consistency. Committee services do have the amendment for circulation. But to not detain the committee is simply to maintain the position the Liberal Democrat group continually maintains that we feel that we're happy to delegate authorities, authority to the director for items up to the value of two hundred thousand pounds. But those above that should be, in terms of transparency, determined by committee. And therefore, it's a slight tweak to paragraph two point one in that respect. And it's completely in line with what the position is that we've maintained for a very long time. Thank you, convener.
Are you, Bailey McPherson? Councillor Coleman, do you wish to speak to your seconding?
Nothing but to formally second us, thank you, convener. Thank you.
Thanks very much. To be consistent as well, I'll be moving the item as is. But I wonder, Mr Many, if you could give us an update on where we are with the review of standing orders?
Thank you, convener. The review of standing orders is continuing and I would anticipate that it will be brought to committee in the first cycle of meetings in the new year. I hope that's helpful, convener.
Thank you very much. I believe, as I've intimated before, I think this review will be very helpful and I think our current standing orders are slightly outdated hence the review. But I do not believe there's the need for further scrutiny and for indeed lowering the level at which we give scrutiny. And therefore, I will be moving the report as is. Do I have a formal second then?
That would be me, councillor Row.
Thanks very much. We'll go straight to the vote then, please, Veronica.
Thank you. The motion by the convener, seconded by councillor Tolland, is that the report be agreed as submitted. The amendment by Bailey McPherson and seconded by councillor Coleman is as has been circulated. Convenor?
Motion.
Councillor Anderson?
Motion.
Councillor Black?
Motion.
Lord Provost Campbell?
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Cordell?
Motion.
Bailey Dawson?
The motion.
Councillor Flynn?
Motion.
Councillor Hunter?
Motion.
Councillor Lynn?
Motion.
Councillor Mills?
Motion, please.
Councillor Soares?
Motion.
Councillor Short?
Motion, please.
Councillor Smith?
Motion.
Councillor Tolland?
Motion.
Bailey Keenan?
Amendment.
Councillor Finnegan?
Amendment.
Councillor McHugh?
Amendment.
Councillor McCarvin?
Amendment.
Bailey Wright?
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson?
Sorry, amendment. I couldn't get my microphone off there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Coleman?
The amendment.
Councillor Creighton?
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan?
Amendment.
Bailey Scott?
Amendment.
So that's fourteen for the motion and ten for the amendment. So the motion is carried.
Thank you very much, Veronica. We'll move to the next item, please.
Item five, corporate property asset management plan. This report is for your approval.
So this report presents the Corporate Property Asset Management Plan twenty twenty five to twenty thirty, comprising the purpose, performance and plans for the council's non-residential property portfolio and the role to support service delivery within the city. Councillor Creighton, I've got you with the first question.
Thank you, convener. On page fifty, the report refers to the Riverside Pavilion area being currently under offer to a local third sector youth organisation. And committee agreed this several, well, some seven months ago actually, back on the twenty second of April. So why is this still under offer and not concluded? Does this report maybe need a little bit of updating?
Do you have a question, councillor Coes? Bring in Mr Prescott.
Chair Many, thanks. I think although these transactions may seem simple, we find very often with them that legalities and historic covenants and other all pain aspects of legal matters can take a considerable amount of time to understand. So I think this won't be the only one where members have understood that there has been a significant lag in actually securing them and transferring the property to the third sector. But I would reassure councillor Creighton, we are very committed to this and other third sector transfers. As we understand, it's a way of maintaining the assets in the community whilst reducing the cost that the council has in running them.
Much, much praise. Wait, does that answer your question, councillor Creighton?
Yep, thank you, Mr Prescott.
Thank you. I see no further questions, so can this be agreed? Thanks very much. Move on to the next item, please, Veronica.
Item six, tenders received by the head of design and property. This report is for approval.
This item is seeking approval to accept the following four tenders. Extending the current contract for heating supply and maintenance of biomass systems. Extending the current contract for supply and installation of electric lifts. Extend the current framework for mechanical services work and supply and installation of play equipment at Speed Drive Play Park. Do I have any questions on this report? No? Can this be agreed? Thank you very much. Take that as agreement. Next item, please.
Thank you. Item seven, facilities management tenders received by head of design and property. Again, this report is for approval.
So this item seeks approval for a sourcing strategy to commence with a procurement exercise to review and explore different sourcing strategy solutions, specifically for health and safety contracts with the potential opportunity to improve effective delivery of these contracts. To allow this exercise to take place, approval sought to extend three existing contracts as contained in the report. Any questions on this item? No? Can I take this as agreed? Great. Thank you very much. That's the business of fair work, economic growth and infrastructure.
Good evening and welcome to city governance. In the light that we've been here an hour and a half or over an hour and a half, I propose we have a ten minute break, some stretch of legs and use the facilities as required. So maybe we'll get longer soon. Back here at quarter to seven. So great. Thank you.
Oh, you're good, Mark, Kevin, yeah? Okay, we'll just move on, Willie, please.
Thank you very much, convener. Firstly, are there any declarations from anyone to the content of the agenda as it stands?
See, councillor Finnegan, was the declaration.
Hi, yeah, it's just for transparency of item fourteen, I actually work within Dundee Health and Social Care Partnership.
Thank you for that, and Bailey Keenan?
Uh, I'm on the advisory board of the Durrup Multicultural Centre.
Thank you, that's noted.
Regent Four.
Yeah, thank you very much, convener. I would now like to advise the committee the request for deputations to address committee in relation to item four. The budget consultation report had been received from David McIntosh and Jenny Lawson of Brooks Bank. Are the committee minded to hear these deputations?
Committee minded to hear deputations? See no objections, so yes, we will. Uh, Mr McIntosh, would you like to copy the podium first, please? You have seven minutes once you get started. And if you can stay at the podium after, if we catch any questions from members, okay? Folks, um, good evening. I recognise a few faces here all right tonight and some of the names and faces that are online. Uh, my name is David McIntosh, um, retired police officer. Worked for some considerable time in Dundee. I was quite an active member in a lot of the committees that were ongoing in the city. I'm currently the president of Dundee City Aquatics, um, which also has a learn to swim school and a disability, uh, learn to swim provision. My interest tonight is on, um, what you've been asked to approve as a committee in item five of your agenda. Um, council could close all the swimming pools, Bull Dragon, Grove, Harris, St John's and St Paul's. As I go through this deposition tonight, I'll come back to that point, but really interested in a bit more information on that. Not dissimilar to Fraser's question, um, earlier on when he had a sort of motion on it. Not a lot of information, and actually, what are we considering in relation to that kind of consultation? I'll come back to that, just some information I would like to provide you all. When you think about that consultation, uh, getting it right or getting it wrong, um, could be irreversible with some unintended consequences. Um, some quick social media and online open source research shows that death by drowning in Scotland is twice the UK average. Um, not without our own tragedy in Dundee over recent years, there was a young kickboxer, Frey Esken, who drowned in two thousand and twenty with her family with Pillockery. I think earlier on this year, there was two students from Dundee University, um, also drowned in sort of open water. If all of the pools were to close, it would seem logical that that rate would go up. I mean, Dundee's a fantastic place to live and stay in it. And we're not without inequalities which can impact on the opportunities for the young people. But are we really saying by having that motion that we're going to increase, um, the inequalities? I'm just thinking, we've been speaking about some climate change and some of the business processes trying to impact on that tonight. With climate change and the summers getting warmer, you would have to think that more of our young people would be drawn to the water. And we're in a favorable place in Dundee, we're next to the Tay. You can think a lot of other sort of kind of waterways and reservoirs that clatter and even further into sort of kind of Maniki. We will have some young people in the future who come into difficulty and will drown unfortunately over the years. Now, where does that leave us as a community, as this committee and even as the administration? How do you argue at that face in the future? That we couldn't have done something, could that person have been alive if they'd accessed the learning to swim in some of our school pools? That's where my children learn to swim, in the school pools in Dundee and St John's. Difficult place to argue. If we're thinking about disability learning to swim, um, we run that sort of in through some of the schools in sort of kind of Dundee. Uh, give some of our young people some independence, strengthen some of their muscles, some health benefits and some real mental health aspect of it. And it's often mentioned a lot at meetings in this room about social prescribing disability learning to swim, that's exactly what that is. And we run at a loss for that, we do it because it's the right thing to do. But ask to approve, um, the consultation of all the school pools removes that for those young people. If we're thinking about dreams and aspirations, uh, we've got a rich history of having competitive swimmers in Dundee, a fantastic water polo team, uh, from, from Mingus Hill. Again, are we saying that we're going to take these young people's and even young adults' dreams away? Because there isn't going to be the, you know, the places to sort of kind of train, um, and to participate in Dundee. There'll be a lot of information will come out in the consultation sort of process, I am sure. But my question tonight, having just thought about what I've said, are we content with what you've been asked to approve as the consultation? Except that there are some significant challenges round about the budget and there's going to have to be a lot of evidence-led decisions made, you know, on that. But if we're going out to consultation with bare minimum information that's listed sort of kind of here, just the closure of these, these pools, and we get to the wrong place, we could argue here that we're morally bankrupt if that's where we're going in that sort of direction. So I suppose for me, my ask is, just highlighting a couple of those tonight, what actually are we speaking about in relation to the consultation? If there's a mature and adult conversation to be had about sort of cutting costs, and I don't think anybody, any place in Dundee would get an argument that the pool's budget should not kind of take its kind of share, because if that stayed exactly how it was, that means there's more money has to come off from somewhere else. But I would be asking here, my ask of this committee is, can we have clarity on what the consultation is? If there's a mature conversation to have, let's have it, because at the moment, it just seems that it's short of what we're wanting to do. And the impact of that consultation question, as it could, that less solve the schools and it might not be, but that would have some significant unintended consequences. And I suppose the last bit I would like to say, if you look at Dundee City Plan, which I've been looking at over the last few days, there's a large section about building resilient and empowered communities. Not having our young people have been able to swim, although opportunity to learn how to swim, or even adults to learn how to swim, doesn't build any resilience whatsoever at all. And it can only add to the aspect of that drowning rate logically. That's everything from me, convener, thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for keeping within time. I could just stress, and you've touched upon it yourself, these are proposals not by the administration but by council officers in the light of the possible savings that might have to be made based on their assumptions at this particular time. And again, I take on board what you're saying with regards to the clarity on consultation, I think we'll come to that when the offices are here. I see councillor Short has a question.
Uh, thank you, convener. Um, nice to see you, sir. Um, I just obviously really, really welcome that you're here and talking to us about how important this is. Uh, and it's a consultation, as we said, and as convener has indicated, officer options. And what, well, this is the first stage, you've come here to have this conversation. And presumably you're not doing that alone, you said you're the president, you're representative of that. Can you give us an idea of the number of people that you, um, represent? Um, and also, um, as you said, it's, it's clumped into all of the pools and all of the schools. Uh, and so just to get an understanding of are more prevalent than others when it comes to what you make use of and where it is determined. Um, and yeah, finally, uh, would you like to join me on New Year's Day for the Duke? Because it sounds like you're perfect.
Thank you, Lyn, it's far too cold for me. But I know some people who will be there, uh, will try and answer your questions. Um, Dundee City Aquatics Swimming sort of kind of club, we also run a learn to swim school, a disability learn to swim school, who are not part of the swimming club, if you like. It would be sounds about Heath Robinson there, but we provide those other services to the community because it's the right thing to do. And we do that in partnership with the, the schools and, and the various sort of kind of school pools in the council. Um, at the moment, it changes from person to person when they move in and out, but we have thirty in disability learn to swim and around two hundred kids in learn to swim. Um, and I think we've got active round about a hundred and forty swimmers and then parents and then officials. Um, sort of kind of thereafter. To give you an example, um, also at, um, see the learn to swim and the disability learn to swim, it's not just the kids that are developed sort of here. We have young people who are going, go through courses and qualifying, they work as lifeguards or they work as teachers. So there are kids who might not have, want to be a competitive swimmer or might want, not want to play sort of kind of water polo. If you like, we develop them in sort of kind of other ways, again, it's something that goes back into the community. One of Scottish swimming strap lines is swimming is for everyone, and I think that probably demonstrates it. Uh, so they are, so it's not just folks who are going to go up and down the pool and swims that are kind of faster, good at throwing and bouncing that ball about, and that's more of the, the evidence from Mingus Hill is they sort of kind of do that sort of type of thing. But it's the opportunities that swimming gives and the life skills that everybody gets, and I suppose the employment opportunities, um, along there. Do you have that help, Lyn?
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks very much. I, oh, sorry. Bailey Keenan, see you for coming.
Uh, thanks, uh, Dave, for coming along and giving your presentation, you know, um, I know it's the administration, it's an officers-led paper that we've got in front of us. Uh, and I suppose it was based on a few weeks ago, where fifteen million pound or over fifteen million pound was the predicted amount that we would have to save. I mean, since then, obviously, the Labour Government have put in two point eight billion. I would hope that at the other end of that, if the, if the Scottish Government, given what we're due, we shouldn't really be looking at any of these cuts and we should be looking at the growth, uh, growth area in Dundee. I do take on board what you say around swimming because obviously Clattle Park is in my area. Uh, you know, maybe wasn't many kids in it swimming this year, uh, because we didn't have a particularly great summer. But last year, twenty six feet of water and kids are diving in there. It's frightening, it's frightening from the point of view of the depth and the temperatures at twenty six feet of water would be it. And the, and the likelihood of them getting in the difficulties. So thanks for coming along and highlighting that. And I hope that the, the administrations listen because we should be, they should be shouting at the, uh, showing a Robson for when he's coming up with the cash. Because we shouldn't have to make this level of cuts. And this is frightening out there for everybody that's in organisations that are unlikely to exist because the funding ain't going to be there for them.
Thanks, Bailey Keenan, and just highlight the fact that the budget decision haven't been made by the Scottish Government yet and we wait on that, this is an estimation from officers at this particular time, as you're aware of, uh, currently. Thank you. Uh, councillor Black, have a question.
You and I served on the Fairness Commission together, um, back in two thousand and seventeen. Are there any issues of fairness around this decision or this consultation that you can, you can tell us about?
I would say there is, um, such, I mean, it links a bit into the point that Kevin made as well. We know in Dundee, I think we're maybe still second on the poverty index, that's not a kind of league that we're happy to be there at. And there are a number of social inequalities. And if you link that into the national, UK national average for Scotland for drowning, kind of Scotland is more than twice the national average, it can only be logical that if we take away opportunities for our young people to be able to learn to swim, only logical that that tragically will go up and we've got evidence of tragedies kind of before. And if the pools are not open, that links right into the point that Kevin And if the pools are not open, that links right into the point that Kevin was making, where are young people going to go and swim? Where are they going to try and enjoy themselves? Where are they going to try and learn to swim themselves? So absolutely, I mean, I think there needs to be, and I accept kind of what the Convenor was saying there, that you know, that it's a consultation that's going out, it's been sort of kind of officer-led, but I think we need to be more specific about what the ask is sort of kind of here. We have a duty of care as everybody here is kind of members of the community and I've worked with lots of sort of kind of people in here at different times yourself in the Fairness Commission. And trying to improve those opportunities, it just strikes me that what you've been asked to approve as a consultation goes against everything that we've worked hard over the last few years in Dundee, so there's an element of fairness related to it. And it's opportunities, it's opportunities that will not be there. And if they're away, my worry is that it's irreversible and there's lots of those unintended consequences. Why should kids that are from deprived areas that can't afford to send, parents send their kids to private swimming sort of lessons? Because there's still be opportunities in sort of kind of Dundee, there's obviously the Olympia Council Pool, but then there'll be Gardine sort of there and there's the university at a cost to that. Most of the fees that we take from our Learn to Swim School, Disability Learn to Swim go to paying the council hire of the pool. So you're taking a significant opportunity and you increase that gap within parents who can afford to do it and parents that can't. I just don't see how we justify the position in years to come because unfortunately somebody will get in trouble because of the beautiful sight of our city as with the waterways around about it. Somebody will be getting in trouble and how do we look at somebody's family in the face? Or how do we think about that from ourselves point of view? I know I'm using some emotive language there, but how do we justify that? And how do you argue somebody could not or not have been alive? Because their parents couldn't afford them to come back to your point, Jimmy, to afford them to go for swimming lessons. So there's a lot there that we've got to consider.
Thank you and thanks for that clear answer. Council Finnegan, see you online, yep.
Yeah, I'm just, would like to make a personal comment about water emergencies. My grandson, about three summers ago, he was in, between first year and second year, he was rescued from Brothie Ferry. There was somebody getting rescued by the lifeboats at one end and him and his friends got caught in the water. And it was actually Grove Pupils that went in to save him. And hearing his experience when he says, Gran, all this water was coming in on top of me and I thought I was going to die. You know, that, that, I just can't forget that until this day that I think, what if the people weren't there? I'm not saying, suggesting that people should dive in, they did because they seen that there was three teenagers in the water in distress. And it could have been a bigger thing to happen, but if they hadn't had the opportunity to learn to swim. My grandson was a swimmer, he learned to swim at Brayview. But we need swimming in the community, we need to have these lessons and pools near us. So it's just, just wanted to say that that is quite a personal thing to me about having pools available to everybody in Dundee.
Thank you very much and again, I think it's important to take on board what's been said tonight. And again, that's going to be a part of the consultation, but again, bear in mind, this is the consultation process. The results of that consultation will come back to the committee, will come back to the elected members for their views. And every political party will be looking at their budget and seeing how they want to go forward with that. And I think we'll take that on board. So thank you very much, Mr Markantosh, for your deputation.
Thank you. Just one final thing, Convenor, much appreciated. I suppose thinking from an administration point of view and a business kind of point of view. And is this why I was asking the question about the detail going out? If you ask the question as it's phrased this now, the consultation on all of the pools. I would think you're going to get quite a lot of pushback and I'm mindful you've got time to get these proposals in and approved. So that's the final thing I would like to say is that what is listed this now might not do what you want it to do. From speaking to own members recently and the view, and I've not spoken to others from in clubs and this is just me speaking to folks within Dundee City Aquatics. Those numbers that Lynne asked us, we think we're getting asked to consult on the closure of all the pools, the way it's worded. It says could, but the way it's listed and at the end, so that's, I suppose that was my plea for tonight is just to make that clear what the community's been asked. And to have that adult conversation about where we need to go.
Yeah, thanks very much. I'll take that with the officers and so the deputations are finished and go from there. Thank you. I think that's probably a good opportunity for we ask the next deputy to come in is to get clarity on the consultations. And what would be happening with regards to that, Mr Em, it's probably the contact on this one. And we'll get clarity on what's been talked about there, Robert, with regards to the asking always one package, the individual input. And we would ask as many people as we can to make contributions to the consultation as well. Look, I get your comments on that, please.
Thank you, Convenor. So as I suppose important to stress, as you have, that we've developed options which are proposals that the council could take forward as its budget, so we've not made any decision. And what we will be looking for is views to inform the budget proposals that are developed later in the year. The appendix in the report is fairly high level and we're at the moment working through, subject to approval, more detailed proposals which will answer some of those questions and clearly will take any feedback from this evening's discussion that help us shape what actually goes out to communities, so what we get back is useful information. So any proposal that is developed off the back of the consultation therefore has all the information that the the deputation was referring to about making it clear about any consequences. So what we don't want is there to be any unintended consequences of any decisions that you do make when it comes back to it. And that will include obviously on the back of the consultation, any proposals that are developed having full impact assessments carried out, Convenor.
Thank you very much for that clarity. Next deputation, Jenny Watson, please. Should you try to operate the podium and you have seven minutes for when you start?
Hi, everybody. My name's Jenny Watson, I'm the manager of Brooks Bank Centre and Services based in Llathon, Midcraig area, Dundee. I'm actually on holiday today, but I decided it was worth coming down here the night. And it really is just to, I am aware that these are just, like, this is a consultation. These are budget proposals at the moment, you're not making any decisions. However, as people who are elected by the communities in the city, it is crucial that you ensure that when your residents want to fill in that consultation paper, that they clearly understand what they are being asked to reply to. So each year, like, I was off ill last week and I got, when it went in the paper, I got like WhatsApped hundreds of times. Have you seen this in the paper, Jenny? Brooks Bank's closing. And I was like, no, it's not closing, this is a consultation, it happens every year. And what we need people to do is complete the consultation document. And so I was, as I was trying to alleviate people's fears, but that's what happens, people think everything's closing, right? So what happened there was that I had to go into work today and kind of speak to other staff and say, you know, this does happen every year. You just might not see it because behind the scenes as the manager, I'm dealing with that, working with the public, working with the communities and asking them to fill in these consultation documents. So the council does have to balance its budget and I'm aware that the money coming from the Labour Government has not been decided how it's been distributed. However, in the past, these consultations have, the question around third-party payments has always been something to the effect, I've not got it in front of us what it's been for, but is, should the council see sort of reduced funding support for some or all of the foreign bodies? And it's under third-party payments. Now, what the difficulty I've got with that and what the people I help has with that is that the general public, like that I work with, are in like, you know, the cost of living crisis, benefit issues, poverty, all that. They didn't know what a third-party payment is, right? I wouldn't know what a third-party payment was if I didn't work for a third sector organisation. So in the past, it's only been, should we stop or reduce third-party payments? Now, the problem with that is, is that I hate to then individually sit down with all these people over these four weeks, this tight period, well, I've got other work going on and explain. Well, Brooks Bank's in there, that means Brooks Bank as well. But there's, there's no drop-down in the past, now there might be this time. So what I'm here the night for is to ask, to suggest, and it's a bit like the guy was saying, everything's kind of in the soup pot. And that's how we described it to somebody in Dundee at the moment and throughout Scotland. All the veg is in the pot and we've got to decide what it is we want in the soup and what's priority for the people in Dundee. The people that represent, you represent, that elected you. And I'm saying that a majority of people do not understand what a third-party payment is. The list includes like Citizens Advice, Boomerang, Brooks Bank, Under Twelves, our projects that somebody else know and know quite well and work with in your communities. So what I'm asking the night is that you'll consider, so there's quite a tight window coming up, that the consultation document needs to be looked at. And the questions, and you know what, I was only looking at the third-party payment section because I work for the charity. But I suppose it applies the same as your swimming pools and stuff. So on this question, I'm asking you to reword this question so that when the public are reading it, they actually understand what it is. Are the drop-down menu, putting all these projects in that are in the pot soup, asking people if that's what they support or what they didn't support? So that people are, and allow a paragraph for the projects saying what it is they do, right? So that you are carrying out an informed consultation. Now, in the past, I wrote to, I wrote to John Alexander last year and the year before, I've wrote to different people. And it's in the past, I think in terms of this consultation, the rent consultation and other things like this. I think, I'm going to quote me on numbers, but you've had about two hundred to three hundred to four hundred returns if you're lucky. I probably, I probably prompted about two hundred of them, right? Being proactive and going and getting that and having to explain to people. So I'm here the night to ask you to consider the group that's looking at the consultation document to look at the detail. And maybe bring in some external third-party organisation or a couple of external people or three different departments to agree on the wording. So that your public, the people you're representing are making informed decisions about what they put forward. Now hopefully, when it come to this, right, and we'll no need to, like, there might be something that comes along. But when we're carrying out consultations in the city, in terms of fairness and the fairness action plans and everything else going on, they could stand here and say, Brooks Bank's crucial to the fairness action plan in the city, Brooks Bank was just winning awards with the council for fairness in Midcraig and Llathon. We're in the pot for another award coming up in December. I could sing the other things that Brooks Bank does, are the money we bring in, are the people's life we change, are that, but this isn't about that for me tonight. That will come later if there is decisions that are going to be made and I think that there are decisions, I will be back. However, tonight, I'm asking you to consider the consultation document and read it. Read it and make a suggestion, read it as if you're Joe Public and you're no councillor or you've not got a law degree or you've not got a just read it and say, what is that question saying? Do I understand that? Or show somebody it and say, do you know what that means? And so the night, that's what I'm asking for, that you make sure that the consultation document is a good document, understandable for everybody to hear their say. And that's really it.
Thanks very much for that. I think the census of this evening between yourself and David is obviously the clarity of the consultation, the quality of the consultation document. And I think officers have taken this on board, it is at a high level, assured with regards to the report. I'm sure what you're making the point between both of you is very clear, that needs to be amended if need be to make sure it is an easy-to-access report as well, an easy-to-access consultation, whether it be on paper or online or maybe in person in some cases. But I think as many people as we can to contribute is really what we're looking for. To make sure we get a proper consensus of the views of the population of the city. Billy McPherson, please.
Thanks very much. And can I just say that was an excellent deputation, as was David's earlier. And I think you made very pertinent points. Could I just ask, if I distill it down, I think we're talking about the consultation has to be in the plainest of English so that it's understandable to your average member of the Dundee public, would that be a reasonable way of putting it?
Don't ask. A very reasonable way of putting that. As I say, the amount of times, not everybody could do the online consultation, but people that I'm dealing with and working with on a daily basis in the communities in Midcraig and Llathon, Finty, Whitfield, Mullins and across the city. They're already struggling and up to head or they just, people didn't say, oh, that charity is a third-party project and that gets a third-party payment. They just think that's Brooks Bank or that's Boomerang. So we need to make it clear so that you could get the views on what the people in Dundee think is important to them in these decisions that lie ahead.
That's very helpful indeed. So I'm sure the communication team are listening, a ban on the phrase third-party payment. And as plain English as possible, something from time to time, to be honest, at committee, I will say, look at this committee report from the point of view of a member of the public and is it in the sort of language that, you know, because I take the view that committee reports for that matter should be in plain, understandable language so that they are useful frankly for the Dundee public just as, just as much as for councillors. So I'm very grateful for your input and I'm absolutely sure as Council Flynn has said that officers will take that on board.
Thank you, Billy McPherson. Council Short, please.
Thank you, thank you, Jenny. Great to see you. And I was a bit excited the last time you were here and you've done us loads again. And Jenny, the fairness panel that we've both been involved in. Would you consider that that would be a good option prior to any consultation going live? That it was brought to the fairness panel for their consideration?
Be happy with that, that's the vehicle that people are using and they're feeding into, a lot of the projects feed into that. So, I mean, I'm not asking for much, I'm just asking on behalf of the people that I serve that if that could go to the fairness panel, and we need to happen quite quick, I'm not sure when the next meeting is because this consultation runs for four weeks and it runs to mid-December and then you've got to get it in, there's no lot of time. So if the timing was right, I would ask that you tack it to the fairness panel. And I'm quite sure they'll put it into some understandable English. And then people like me could go out and ask people to fill it in, you know. In relation to that as well, in terms of the consultation documents in the past, they come in and they've only had like three, four hundred returns, which you just probably think is pretty good, I think it's not very good. But we might actually get more people filling that in, you know, and it could be informing the debate and informing yourselves on what it is your constituents are finding is important to them. So, and it's good to do that, I feel so often for politicians to check back in and see what people are feeling. So, yeah, definitely through the Fairness Commission, if there's, if time doesn't allow for that, then maybe a suggestion to the officer that runs that group to get a couple of them a review or something like that.
Thank you very much. Bailey Keenan, please.
Thanks for coming along today and giving your presentation. I'm going to ask officers a question. Probably I'm not allowed to do that before I ask you something, what, you know, my intention is to ask them for the breakdown of each organisation and how much they believe they're looking to cut. Because, you know, a hundred thousand pound for one of these organisations might just see the doors closed. So given that that might be where it is, could you maybe give an indication how many people are employed at Brooks Bank? And an indication of how many people you go out there and support in our communities? Whether that be, you know, filling up forums or whether it's been able to lever benefits in their direction? Because I know that you do tremendous good work out there.
So as I say, Brooks Bank's got a lot of services, it's got a money advice team, a debt and benefit service, will work really well in partnership with the council and that. And I would say that the council has supported Brooks Bank for, well, in some shape or form, it used to be the money advice support team and stuff, it changes over time, for twenty-nine years. And I've been here for twenty-nine years and there's been, we have had cuts, we've had late minute, last minute cuts, oh, five percent or ten percent and it's really hard. So the implication, like, the amount of people I could, like, the last time I looked at the statistics for Brooks Bank in the last six months, I think we were up to, we had engaged with fourteen thousand five hundred and something people. Now, that, that's in different services, that could be in Shell Safety, that could be in Money Advice, but there's also the things like Gains, you're bringing in benefits, income, your unclaimed benefits. I do think Brooks Bank sits quite well just now in terms of, you know, the needs of the public and, you know, the need for, to get people on Pejio Credit and all that and, you know. And it's important that these services remain, but so, yeah, over a year, we're probably looking at about twenty, thirty thousand people. We've probably got about twenty-three staff at the moment, no, no, our full-time. Some of the difficulties is, is that we get, so projects like mine and other third-party organisations also apply for additional money. Now, a lot of the time we'll play with that additional money based on being in partnership with other people. So for example, Brooks Bank's just now getting some investing communities money for the Llathon Fairness Initiative. Because Llathon's one of the most Uh, because Llanlain's one of the most deprived areas in Scotland and the insulation and stuff. So it'd be pretty crazy to go saying, like, the Scottish government's giving us, like, a hundred and a thousand pound a year to make some real inroads and then we've won awards and that with the council for being their partner and that to, to come along and pull the rug off a part of the core budget. Now, the core budget supports a lot of the staff that have been there long term. So you're talking about like myself, the manager, child safety officer, the admin, like the key support staff. A lot of the additional staff coming through additional monies. Now, sometimes what happens if we get a budget cut or we take a bit of that jigsaw away, we might lose some of the other money. So for example, the Scottish government took five grand off us last year, uh, because they were trying to save money. I'm not quite sure why, but that was across the board. Everybody lost five grand. Now you say five grand, but that five grand, when we've signed up for a living wage and as a living wage employer, as Dundee's asking us today, every time the wage goes up, our staff costs go up. So really, it could really set a lot of places backwards. I don't know kind of if we get a big cut this year if we could be a living wage employer. Because some of the other implications as the time scale. So we've had some funding because of COVID. After COVID, there was a lot of places throwing money at you, like some of the banks and that, you know, to get additional money advice staff and that. A lot of that finishes in March. So everybody got a set of accounts with implications for posts that finish in March. And I'm not sure where I'm going to find money for them. So there's a lot of, a, a, a lot of, you know, accoun- account stuff to look at and a lot of considerations to hit. So timing is important. So the consultation is really important to me, but the timing or any cuts is really important to me because the committee and the, the, the services need to make some harsh decisions. Because the council will cut my budget. What they'll say is, there's your money, here's what we want, right? But it's really up to the project and committees to decide whether they make the cuts and it's very hard. So, yep, the cuts could run, if, if we lose any money again this year, because we're already losing a lot of funders this year, like the Bank of Scotland, because we've had two years with them and all that, then we're probably looking at cutting in a lot of the stuff we do. Uh, and half a lot of the services, because we just don't have the people for it. So there will be implications across the board for, for probably people over Dundee in terms of advice and child safety and activities and community engagement and getting people to engage in things. So, yep, it's a pickle.
Thanks very much, uh, for that. I got you off a bit earlier. Pardon me. Uh, councillor Tolan, please.
Thanks. Hi Jenny. Um, so, I mean, it sounds, I mean, it sounds like stability of funding is probably going to be something that would be a panacea for, for you guys. Um, and it sounds like you're kind of managing a whole host of different funding sources and trying to balance that out. Um, can I ask, um, as, as, as part of the third sector, how the national insurance hike might increase your staffing? Because you talked about staffing costs.
Yeah, well, in terms of staffing costs, as you can, like, a lot of staff didn't see that. They get their salary. We didn't get the increases like everybody else gets for the government, like, because we're the third sector. So it's kind of like that. But every time national insurance goes up, yep, it hits and we've got to start moving budgets around. Now, places like mine, what we tend to do is generate income. So we might generate income through lets and stuff, but we're, we're no extortionate because we're trying to provide lets to community groups and that and for free or, you know, for donations and stuff, because it's about Dundee and it's about participation. And you've got to give people places to be able to do that. And we do that, we do that quite well. But the difficulty is that in terms of, you know, funding and national insurance and stuff like that, so I'm not the finance officer, but I do have quite a good handle on it. But she came to me a week before the last and says, Jenny, what's going to happen if we lose that extra £5,000 that we've been getting towards helping with the national insurance? And I was like, well, what's going to happen? And like, I'm not sure what's going to happen. Let's see. So there's, there's lots of, so this is what I'm, what I'm looking at over the next period. Like, get the consultation right. I'll go out and do what I need to do as a manager and get support for Brooks Bank and I'll fight its corner. But in order to change the delivery and the, the, the employment rights and the, the, what the public get in any of these community type organisations like Brooks Bank, we need to plan for that. Because if we didn't have a plan for that, then it's in the centre and within the services, it becomes chaos. What happens is the staff start looking for other jobs. We start losing the staff. And then we've got a real problem because we can't afford our posts. Uh, so, you know, the changes in national insurance, yep. The living wage that goes up that we're signed up to, we're a living wage employer, right? Yes. Sometimes I actually said to somebody the other week, I love being a living wage employer. I'm glad we've done it. But you know what? It's costing us a fortune and it's, and, and it might result in, you know, the part-time workers losing their job because we didn't keep up with that. So every penny counts. And in addition to that, you've got to have reserve funds legally to keep set aside in the event that you close. So that you could, you know, pay everything that everybody's entitled to and take your time to run the project down. So that would take at least six months. So you need to keep reserves and that for that. So give the council, it's true. I mean, they're communicating with me on all aspects, so, so, like, what, like, you know, might be coming or what things that are considering. And the door's always open to go and speak to the officers. I'm not knocking them in the slightest. It's difficult. It's a difficult time. But it's just, you need to get this consultation right. If you want to see what the people of Dundee are saying, get, get the questions right. And then look at that and then make a decision on how you're going to decide what decision you make at the budget meeting. Because you're right, this is an officer-led thing. But they've got to put forward something. If they didn't, that would be a problem. But, you know, at the end of the day, hard decisions, if they're going to need to be made, you need to make sure that they, they sit well with you and you can sleep at night. And that's, that's really what it is for me.
Thank you again for a very clear answer. I think it's excellent responses tonight. Thank you. I see no more questions. So thank you very much, Jenny.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate that. And thank you, David, for your deputation as well. And I'll just be open to questions to officers. If anybody has any questions, I see Billy McPherson, please.
Uh, thanks indeed, convenor. I, I do have some comments regarding, um, the report, but I'll save that till we get to the formal uh, part of the business. Um, I have a very specific question. I should say, I have run it past the children and family service in advance. I emailed, um, them on Wednesday and had a reply saying that the, that this would be looked into with TESI contracts. And it's very specifically, and actually, some of what Jenny said about being very specific, um, I think it has to be explained to the public. But this one has to be explained to the members of the committee. So it's item six of the options. And it reads school crossing patrol or service. The council could, could to remove, that doesn't really make sense, but anyway, I think it means could look to remove this service in places which do not meet the ROSPA guidance threshold of a score of four M. And my question, um, for officers was, could that be explained exactly what the, uh, the guidance threshold actually, uh, means in practice? And what the effect would be in relation to specific school crossing patrol or sites? Um, and, um, I have had an assurance that information would be made available. I'm just really wondering, um, because we have had requests before, put it in advance so the officers can answer on the night. So I'm just really wondering if there is actually an answer on that. Um, because I think it would be helpful, uh, and taking Jenny's point, I think when it comes to consultation, it has to be made very clear what the implications of that would be actually in practice as opposed to ROSPA guidance threshold of a score of four M.
Thank you for that. And I think the thing that's came out tonight is quite clear, the consultation has to be clear and, uh, for anyone who wants to participate in that. But bringing in Robert to answer their question, Billy McPherson.
Thank you, Gaby. I mean, I would agree. It's important that anyone being consulted knows what the impact is on them and what that means. And it's not, it wasn't our intention to try and answer that now. I don't have the answer, um, on the, um, ROSPA scoring system, convenor. I don't know whether you want, we can provide that separately or Mrs May may be able to, um, respond to that now, convenor. May?
Thank you. Thank you, convenor. Um, and thanks for the question, uh, Bailey McPherson. And, yeah, we have responded, but we don't have all the detail yet. Um, we work in partnership with TESI contracts because they actually, um, employ a school crossing patrollers, as you're all aware. And so they also help us to score the crossing places so that we know if we require a, a crossing patroller there or not. And the four million is a, is a maximum score. Um, and we currently have several school crossing patrollers, um, actually well within that. In other words, we don't need to have them. We're quite generous with how we score them in Dundee and place, um, crossing patrollers at places where they wouldn't meet the ROSPA guidance. So we've asked TESI contracts to come back with some details that we'll share out with the committee.
Thank you. It's a good example of actually making sure we get the proper information, uh, put in front of us going forward. So answer your question, Billy McPherson.
Well, it doesn't answer my question, obviously, but the, the, and, and that was really the reason why I raised it in advance. But I'm not being critical of Mrs May, but, um, she replied immediately. And I do realise that there is a bit of a third party involved here in terms of, uh, TESI contracts actually delivering the service. So I'm not being critical at all. I think it would be helpful if the detail of that was shared with the whole committee, um, in, in, in due course. And obviously, I know that, uh, uh, the communications team will be bearing that sort of thing in mind so that when, uh, just exactly as Jenny said, uh, a, a, about the sort of plain English aspect, so that the implications, as, as Mr Emmett said, the implications for the member of the public in Dundee, um, is clear to them. So grateful for that and we will await, uh, further details in, in, in due course. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think Mr Emmett's taken the comments on board with regards to the consultation. Uh, Billy Keenan.
Sorry. Just, uh, obviously I said that when I spoke to, to Jenny there, asking her questions, obviously for people to have a good understanding of what's likely expected for their organisation, could officers give with the detail of the third party organisations? And how much they expect from each one that's going to make up the, uh, eight hundred and seventy, uh, six thousand? And, and the culture organisations as well, because that would be useful for me to have an understanding. I can remember through, uh, or I could take a good guess of how much the Citizens Advice Bureau, uh, managers buy one. Uh, but I would like an indication on the rest, so as they have, uh, with the seven hundred odd thousand comp in, what's the breakdown?
Thank you. As Mr Emmett said, it's a high level, uh, report, hence why it's been captured into that. But I'll bring him in to answer your question.
Thank you, convenor. So the, the amounts in the table of the total amount of funding that's provided across those organisations, the consultation paper was set to how much each, each organisation gets. And, and where possible, what that contributes towards their organisation as a whole. So if we're funding a hundred percent or 10% of the organisation, so there's a sense of context in there. We haven't set a target for each organisation. Coming back from the consultation, if you, if options are developed, it will be in the light of the information. So, so at this stage, there's no specific proposal relation to those. It's an option that the, the committee could explore because those are discretionary services that we provide.
Sorry, that, that, that answer kind of confuses it even further because there's nothing in here that tells me we'll be looking for 10% for one person or 20 or 50, you know, but it would be good to know how much the organisation gets and how much we're looking to shave off if that's the case. So if, if council, councillors can have sight of that before it goes into consultation, then we could be asked officers, uh, going forward. So there's a bit more clarity than the rest here this evening.
Okay, thanks. That's noted. Uh, councillor McKeon, please.
Thank you. In the same vein as the two deputations and the earlier questions, um, I have a question on the format of the consultation. Um, the report sets out a range of cuts, some of them to key services that will have a detrimental effect on some of our most vulnerable groups. You've heard about that already this evening. Since its publication, it's caused alarm and dismay, certainly among my constituents and probably across the city. And Jenny's already spoken about that. At 4.3, the report details significant additional funding for Scotland from the Labour Government, not factored into the budget shortfall, since we await a decision from the Scottish Government and how this will be allocated. In light of significant concerns at these cuts being expressed across the city, can serious consideration be given to including a health war warning prominently displayed within the consultation to reassure citizens that these are the worst case scenarios? And that they may not be necessary once the Scottish Government's allocation decision is received.
Thank you. As, as people have said, we can't predict what's going to happen in the government's budget in December. And I think officers have done the right thing in presenting this in front of us. A lot of us know exactly where we, we stand currently within the, the city. And again, looking forward, we can't be, uh, we can't look into the future and see what's going to happen. And I think the important part about this is about openness and transparency, uh, across the city. And a lot of people know the difficult situation the council is in. And again, 171 million since 2008 has been saved in the city. Uh, we're now looking at another 15.6 and, uh, if you look at 4.4 with the national insurance, it could be another six to seven million added on that due to implication, implications of what's been presented from the national insurance from the UK government. But I'll bring in Robert to answer your question.
Thank you, convenor. So we're looking at the wording in the consultation to make it clear that these options are considered in the context of the council's overall budget, um, and the Scottish budget, which we won't know until, um, the fourth of December. I think we've brought this forward, I suppose, as much as anything else, because if we're going to consult properly and have, um, meaningful feedback, we need to do that now. So it's available to be considered as part of the budget in the context of what we actually get in terms of a settlement. And, and as the convenor says, we don't yet know what decisions the Scottish government will make on the fourth of December. But we are reviewing, um, the wording that will be in the consultation and will reflect, um, on the views of committee today, convenor, in terms of making that as transparent as we can for, um, respondents.
So that's a new on the health warning then.
Sorry, if you want to come through the chair, please.
Sorry.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Uh, Billy Scott.
Thanks, convenor. Can I say first of all that this is some progress on the way things were dealt with last year? If you remember, a possible list of savings were circulated to all members and it managed to find its way into the public domain, which caused a great deal of concern to some people. So formalising in this way is a much better way of doing it. And hopefully, we won't need to use any of these savings. The Scottish government will give us a fair share of funding to allow that not to happen. But following the consultation, should you decide to go ahead with some of these savings and include them in your own budget proposed? Is there the need to do that? Will we and the public know in advance of the budget meetings which ones are taken forward? Because last year at the budget meeting, uh, as in, uh, opposed to previous years, we didn't find out until a day of the budget itself, what savings you were proposing. I think having heard what the deputations have said tonight, if any of these savings, any of the ones impacting them are going to be included in your budget, then they need to have the opportunity to come down to the budget meeting to speak as a deputation. And they'll need to know in advance of that meeting whether that's to be included or not.
Yep. Thank you, Billy Scott. I won't commit to anything this evening because obviously we've been set the budget. Think it's a bit of a volatile situation with regards to votes successful within the parliament. So we won't know until a particular time. Don't know when that time's going to be. So I won't commit to agreeing to, uh, provide any budget to yourselves in advance at this particular time. That'll have to be reviewed by the administration group at the, at our prerogative as well. Thank you. Uh, councillor Tolan, please.
Thank you. I'm going to take the liberty of doing a couple of comments, then a question. Um, I think that if we're talking about distress, the leak caused more distress last year because there was no recourse for discussion and there was no transparency within this discussion. I'm the same as Jimmy. I'm finding myself having to explain to people what is, is expected of them in terms of the consultation and what it is they need to kind of think about in terms of engaging. I'm finding positively that my local ward is engaging quite constructively, actually. And there's, uh, there are meetings set up to discuss these. Um, it looks like they're going to get invited as local councillors to engage in those things as well. So the transparency of it, I think, is important. It is incumbent on councillors, I think, and all members of the council though, to not whip up the discontent and to actually think about rational discussion and try and calm the people, anybody who is feeling that kind of distress. As has been pointed out quite, quite a few times, actually, that these are potential cuts. These are possibilities. These are perhaps worst case scenarios. Um, the labour money that's coming, it seems to be treated as if it's a land of milk and honey. It will not remove all these obstacles that we now have. My question, however, goes back to Jenny's point. Um, and that is about, I suppose, the accessibility of the report and trying to make the report as accessible as it can. I am on the Health and Social Care Partnership and I know that they spend a lot of time trying to make that kind of people friendly, as it were. My question is this though, um, what assessment of the accessibility was made, um, before the report was sent, set out?
Thank you. Robert.
Apologies, convenor. I'm not quite sure what.
Well, I mean, in terms of thinking about your accessibility, what criteria did you use in order to assess its accessibility? How plain was its language? Um, how clear was the text within it? How clear was the information in it? Isn't there criteria that you would set in terms of thinking about how this is accessible for the public?
So, thank you, convenor. So that's what we're working on at the moment for the public consultation is looking at how we can make it accessible. I wasn't quite sure what you meant accessible to access the survey or the wording of it. So we're looking with the communications team very closely at what is provided and providing the information that's, um, needed. So people can assess, as I was saying before, what impact, what does it mean for me if this option is, is developed? So that's a piece of work that's going on at the moment. And as I said before, we'll reflect comments that have come up tonight, which will help us, I think, in terms of forming that, um, that narrative.
Thank you. I see no more questions. So, uh, we can just move to the report, if that's okay. And this report seeks approval from the committee to consult members from the public on possible budget options proposed by officers for the financial year twenty five, twenty six. And we're actually asked to approve the recommendations. I, I've been, there was an amendment put forward, uh, by the SNP group and I see Billy McPherson wants to come in.
Yeah, I simply want to make a couple of comments, um, convenor. Uh, it's really around the process. I made the point, I don't share Bailey Scott's view that this is, um, uh, uh, better than we've done in the past. I agree that last year was, was not, was not great in terms of being leaked to the press. But the fundamental point I would say about this is there are so many imponderables at this point in time. We are consulting with frankly blindfolded. And, um, um, it's not simply that, um, uh, the Cabinet Secretary for Finance has not yet had hard budget in Scotland. And therefore we'll have a little bit more certainty in relation to the, the settlement from Westminster and how that impacts on the Scottish budget. And crucially, how well the Scottish Government respond to that money in terms of ensuring a fair share is given to local government. There's also the whole issue, and it was touched on earlier, about the, um, the national insurance, um, hike in relation to, uh, employers. Now, the effect on that, as we know from the report, is between six and seven million pounds. And that is frankly night and day in relation to, um, uh, the, uh, situation in relation to potential, um, cuts. Um, David McIntosh, this is excellent presentation tonight, mentioned that if we went ahead with all of these cuts, it would be moral bankruptcy. He's absolutely right. And I don't believe for a moment that any one of the 29 members of this council would want to see that shopping list actually implemented. But I think by, um, going out at this stage with this list, not knowing, um, the outcome of the Scottish, um, uh, uh, government budget and not knowing, uh, the, uh, amount of funding that will come forward separately from that in relation to mitigating the effect of the national insurance increase for employers for the public sector. Until we know these, um, the, um, it's completely left field as to where we actually sit budget wise. Now, I know officers said, well, we need time to get the consultation and so on. But to my mind, consultation should be meaningful in relation to the actual financial position facing the council. And the bottom line here is simple, we don't know. And we're not going to know for a few weeks yet. So I'd simply make that point. I don't see any reason that we, you know, I, there, there is, rationally, there is, um, this report. Um, um, if the administration want to put it through, we're not going to stand in their way. Uh, because, uh, there has to be a consultation process. But we have some real concerns about the speed, the timing of this in relation to both the Scottish budget being announced and also clarity on the support that will be given to the public sector in relation to the national insurance employers increase. Uh, thank you, convenor.
Thank you, Billy McPherson. I deserve to take on board your comments. However, I would say that this is the right thing for the officers to do this. I think it's the right thing to bring it forward, to highlight the condition that the council funds and finances at this particular time. But with regards to your consultation comments, I'll bring in the chief executive, uh, who will give us some sort of understanding of why we have to do this consultation.
Thanks, convenor, and thanks, Bailey McPherson, for the question. As you know, um, council officers provide advice to, um, each, um, different party within the council to allow them to consider whether or not they will, um, put forward a budget, um, during that annual budget cycle. Unfortunately, not going out to consult and waiting for the announcement in the Scottish Government budget would take us up to beyond the middle of December. And at this point, there are no time scales for knowing any financial distribution in relation to consequentials that flow for national insurance. So at this point, to protect the council's interests and to give members as many options as possible, accepting the views tonight that have been expressed by elected members in the deputation, officers view it as firmly that we have no other option but to recommend that we go out to consult whilst waiting for that information from the Scottish, um, Government budget, which will be the middle to end of December. And then as that completes the parliamentary process through January and February. Thanks, convenor.
Thank you. And I think that answers the question. Uh, can we put the amendment up, Willie, please? Just speak to it. It's, uh, quite clear that one of the main issues within this report is, is being touched upon the national insurance and the, the possible impact it will have on not just ourselves, but our partners in leisure and culture, TESI contracts, et cetera. It's important to highlight the issue there. And I think it's also quite clear what's in the report. There could be six to seven million added, and it's Billy McPherson just touched upon. It's not an insignificant sum when it comes to setting the budget in front of us. I have already written to, uh, the Secretary of State for Scotland, asking for clarity on this. From a previous letter I got with the eleven up fund where he included that. By the way, I'm still awaiting a response. And I think it's only right that we get it from a council perspective and the citizens of Dundee and possibly for Scotland as well to find out exactly where the Chancellor is on this and making sure that we don't see any reduction in the national insurance. And it's fully implemented and fully paid up to make sure that the council and partners do not lose out on any of the national insurance, uh, funding. It should be available to everyone, whether it be leisure and culture, TESI contracts, et cetera, and third parties we work with. So I've put, I've proposed the amendment be added. And, uh, I have a second there and Council Short, if you'd like to come in.
Yeah, thank you, um, convenor. Um, I just find it counterintuitive. Um, I just think that the Treasury would want to raise as much money as possible so that they could give it back to local authorities because that's where the public are best served. Um, and therefore I was just perhaps a little bit naive and I thought we were going to be, um, taken out of that equation. Um, so I'm really pleased and delighted to second you this evening, uh, so that you can write to the Westminster Government. Uh, the other thing is, I think we also need to, um, give a little bit of thought to the number of SMEs that actually operate. And I think there's a wider number of SMEs that operate in Dundee and Scotland as a whole than perhaps the wider UK and how they'll be impacted. Um, I've not been yet, as you can tell, but I share a barber with one of my colleagues and they're concerned about the fact that they're going to have to pay more national insurance. So it won't just have an impact on us as a council, but also have an impact what we try to do with the high street and raising, um, morale there. So I think this is a, this is a really difficult one. Uh, I'd love to see more money come in our way, but we have to temper it with actually common sense effectively. And thank you for raising.
Thank you, Council Short. And I'll bring in, uh, Bailey Keenan in the first instance, please.
Convenor, I, I'd be prepared to support you if, if you're prepared to write to the Cabinet Secretary for Finance and ask the local government to get their fair share of the money that's being passed on in Barnet consequentials. Because in my opinion, that should be somewhere in the region of twenty six million pound coming in direction of Dundee. And we wouldn't need then to make this level of cuts. You know, I think to, to play a wee bit of politics on keeping the emotion a bit one sided, uh, doesn't reflect on what's going on in the city. Given that you're going to go to consultation on making massive cuts, there might not need to be done. Uh, so I think it's, uh, providing you're prepared to go and ask the Cabinet Secretary for a full share. And of course, she's got a number of tax reasons powers that she can use as well, such as land and valuation tax that we'd add to the pot in Scotland. So, you know, call upon the Cabinet Secretary to come up with the money and I'll support the motion, feeling that I won't.
I suspect you won't be supporting it then because I won't be doing that. I think it's coming from the UK government. The UK government put this through, not the Cabinet Secretary for Scotland. And I think it's important that we actually make it aware of the, the issues within here. And I don't think you're kind of going to have a tangent. The government in Scotland will deal with its budget in December, when it gets its final settlement and knows exactly where we are with both the budget itself and the block grant and the national insurance contributions that may or may not be coming.
So, Convenor, if there's, if there's cuts to this level.
I'm not, I'm not finished yet. I'm not finished yet. Thank you very much. And, uh, the savings that have been proposed tonight are being proposed by the officers to go out to the public for consultation. They may or may not be taken. And again, we'll just make that clear.
Perhaps I'll ask the officers separately then to write to the Cabinet Secretary to get that level of clarification. No doubt Coslow will be doing it. Perhaps you're a leader in Coslow that will oppose that.
Or possibly leading Coslow. Might, but he might not. He's not there anymore, I don't think. Uh, we're kind of bringing, sorry. Billy McPherson, please.
Uh, thanks, convenor. Uh, our group are happy to support your, um, uh, amendment. Uh, because, you know, I, I've already made the point that there are imponderables around the national insurance changes and, um, clarity on that and support in relation to that, uh, to not just local government. And touching on what, uh, Council Short had to say, the wider public sector and, um, organisations that we support. And the amendment correctly alludes to, uh, uh, TESI contracts, construction services, leisure and culture and third party organisations as, as well. I have no particular problem if you weren't minded to, uh, agree to it, but you're not. Um, to asking the Cabinet Secretary to make sure that there's a fair settlement for local government in Scotland. Because bluntly, that has not been the case each and every year, uh, during her tenure as Finance Cabinet Secretary. But notwithstanding that, I can't, at the end of the day, say that I don't agree with the content in your amendment. So whether it's amended or it's not amended, we will be supporting you. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Billy McPherson. Uh, Council Tolan, please.
Thank you. Glad Bailey Keenan understands Barnet formula, but maybe not quite as ill as he thinks. When, in terms of public services, Scotland's proportion of public services is higher than that in England. So the Barnet class schedules would mean that actually the settlement would be less and wouldn't quite meet the, the needs, um, that we require for the public services. Um, I think that, you know, there's a lot of talk about the budget. Um, the Joseph Randtou Foundation's initial analysis was that actually what would happen is that this is an increase in inequality for the next five years according to this budget. Um, the charity sector is, is pleading with the, um, with the government to not implement the national insurance hike because it causes significant problems within the charity sector. And this comes back to this as well. The third sector will be particularly damaged by the national insurance hike. Um, it was raised with, um, uh, just to me the other day, actually, that even people, even places like GP surgeries, this will be impacted upon them. So I'm certainly happy to support the motion. I think that for me personally, the national insurance hike functions as a regressive taxation. Because what it does is it tends to punish the smaller companies in the smaller areas. And actually, the, the, um, institutions that support might be some of our most vulnerable people. It's those with the largest shoulders that could, uh, shoulders that could probably man this cost. But it is functioning for me as a regressive taxation. And that is deeply problematic, given that the Labour Party seem to think that they're about equality. So there is a problem for me here. There's a fundamental inequality in that national insurance hike. And, um, I would be very, very happy to support this motion.
Thank you, Council Tolan. Uh, Council Anderson, please.
Thank you. Thank you, convenor. I'm also speaking to support the motion. At this point in time, it's not at all clear whether the, um, payment, the reimbursement for the national insurance contributions will be based on the Barnet consequentials or on the actual costs. It's very important that they're met, that they meet the full costs. And what we're asking, um, the, the Chancellor to do is pay as much as possible in making sure that the city and the whole public sector have the full costs met. We know that these increases will have a big impact on the third sector, as well as all the alios and the associate, the social care sector. We need as much money as possible to make sure we can support those parts of our, um, city in meeting these increased costs. So I just want to support this and say, and I'm, I'm very, very clear that the Cabinet Secretary is advocating as strongly as possible to get clarity on this issue. And I'd like to support her in that job.
Thanks, Council Anderson. Uh, Council Black, please.
Thanks, convenor. I've been struggling to try and find something positive to say about the idea of going out to consultation and cutting all this money from valuable organisations and from within the city council. Because a number of cuts are, are being aired, not proposed, um, to council services and to things like the Scottish Welfare Fund that the council provides. Um, however, there are positive things about this. One, the consultation gives people of the city a chance to tell us what they value, and that's important. Uh, another is that it enables us to comply with our legal duty as described in five point one of the paper, which says we have to pay proper attention to issues of equality. Uh, that could be disability, it could be any other protected characteristic there. We have to make sure that we know exactly what the effect of the changes might be to a whole range of groups. And we will get a robust, integrated impact assessment, which will enable us to take a better decision when the time comes to actually make these decisions. And that's good. That helps and that could avoid any difficulties, for example, in the courts, which we've had in, in other things. Um, personal thing, I've worked in the voluntary sector most of my days. Um, many of these years when I've worked in the voluntary sector, it's taken until the thirty first of March before I knew whether I had a job or not on the first of April, or actually more accurately, on the sixth of April after the financial year. And, uh, it's very, very hard for agencies to plan services, um, with that level of uncertainty. So I would agree with Bailey Scott that the process is better this year. What I would suggest is that we make it even better next year and we start the process earlier. And that will enable us to do a better consultation. Because I think it's such a, a complex task that we're engaging on, that it's going to be difficult to make this consultation as clear as Ginny would like. Um, but I know that we'll try and I, I respect the efforts of officers to do that. Thanks, convenor. I'll be supporting you.
And finally, Council Home, please.
Thank you very much, convenor. Just a, a very brief point because there's been a lot of, um, very clear and helpful comments so far. So I don't mean to go on. Um, as others have said about the charitable sector, you know, it, it's crucial that we get that, that clarity on the national insurance implications. Um, but I wanted to specifically speak about TESI contracts, uh, which you've teased out in your amendment. Um, and convenor, TESI contracts have really raised concerns with impact on national insurance on the organisation, which is owned by the three constituent councils, uh, in the area. Uh, we realise this has a very, uh, potentially severe impact on it. And so it's very helpful that you've raised this, uh, and indeed the section, uh, the proper officer of TESI contracts has already made representations on that's behalf. So I just wanted to briefly highlight that. And, uh, as I say, I'll be supporting the amendment with you.
Thank you. Uh, so I'll propose we move the report as is with the amendment. Is there any objections to that? My name will be with the contrary view. I don't see any comments. So we'll move that with the amend, sorry.
You'll note my dissent for your decision.
Uh, officers will note that. Thank you. Uh, there's no, we'll take that as agreed then. Thank you. Can we move on to item two, please?
Yeah, thanks very much, convenor. That then takes you back to the agenda submitted in item two. There's Protecting People Committee Annual Report, which is for noting.
Firstly, I can apologise to Elaine and Pamela for waiting so long this evening. I thought you may have been, uh, brought, uh, to the committee before now. Uh, just, uh, just directly into the, I'll bring the officers and the chairs to actually introduce the report. And, uh, and any questions after that, we'll come back to that. So, uh, Elaine.
Thank you. And, uh, thanks, uh, interesting debate, uh, as well, um, that you've been having. Um, so thank you very much for the opportunity to introduce this report. Um, I'm Elaine Torrance. I'm the independent chair of the Children at Risk Committee and the Adult at Risk Committee. We've changed the title somewhat because we've tried to include, or we are including, suicide prevention, violence against women and broadening our approach into a public protection, um, approach. Um, and, um, supported today by Pamela Dudek. Pam, Pamela's with us as well today. Uh, she's the new chair of the, um, ADP, the, um, Alcohol and Drug Partnership. And I'll get Pam just to introduce herself right at the end. I'm just going to say a few brief words, um, about the report. And we're delighted to present the Protecting People Annual Report. It runs from April twenty three to April twenty four. Um, as you can see in the paper, there's no statute requirement to publish a report apart from the Adult Support and Protection Committee, which I am the independent convenor of. Um, and we have to produce a biannual report. It's our biannual report, um, due this year. Um, but it's very helpful, I think, to have a public protection report that advises, um, of all the work we do in public, um, protection. Um, uh, and, and enables us to see the progress that we're making. us to see the progress that we're making and also the good work of the staff that we have that make a huge contribution to keeping the people of Dundee City safe. This is the second integrated report, which consists of a main report with key data achievements, challenges and future priorities. And it's got a much more detailed accompanying information document. And we've done that this year after feedback from last year on making this more accessible and easier to read. So as can be seen in the report, there's been significant progress made in working across the committees. We've developed Protecting People Learning and Organisation Development Framework, which cuts right across violence against women and girls, suicide prevention, children and adults at risk of harm. We've got a new learning review process that we've agreed jointly with our Angus colleagues as well. And that again applies to all of the areas that we need to do in terms of public protection. The report highlights the data in each area and the progress and the challenges and future priorities. In terms of the data, in adult support and protection, you can see an increase in referrals with the key types of harm being welfare concerns and financial harm. In child protection, over 2,300 police concern reports were reported during this period. And the frequently reported concerns were domestic abuse, mental health and parental drug use. And that absolutely reflects the need for much more joint work, in which we've been promoting over this period. The domestic abuse figures remain very high, as you know, in the city. And we're constantly working on that. And at this present time, we've got the 16 Days of Action that are happening as well across the city. So I hope people will support that as we move forward. Suicide prevention is now a key focus in committees. And we've got a new plan that has just been agreed and published. We've had significant progress in work with older young children. We've been redesigning our Adults at Risk pathway. And I know in terms of the drug and alcohol work, the medication assisted treatment, the MAT standards, has been really good progress in meeting those as well. But there are challenges in all the areas as well as we move forward. One of the things that we keep working on is embedding the voice of people with lived experience, hearing back from the people that we work with about how we can improve our services and also how we can hear their voice as we strategically develop new services or indeed priorities for us. Implementing the improvement work whenever we do a learning review about something that perhaps has gone not to plan in terms of the city and perhaps a young person or adult has come to harm, we need to implement the improvement work that comes from that. And there are challenges in doing that in a timely way, partly because of capacity issues. But we will be continuing to progress that over the next period of time. And just as you've been talking about, managing the public sector financial pressures and the insecure funding for the third sector is one of the things that again impacts on public protection as it does on all the areas of work that you've just been discussing about today. And that's a very current live issue for the violence against women, third sector organisations, who are still awaiting a funding agreement into this next period of time. I'd just like to say thank you to all our committed staff across the city, the NHS, the police, the third sector, the council staff, who all work really, really well in partnership and really work hard to dedicate their time to keep the people of Dundee as safe as we possibly can. So that was my introductory comments. I don't know whether Pam just wants to introduce herself to you and whether there's any particular issues that she would like to highlight. So thank you very much, Convenor.
Thank you, Elaine. And thanks again for your patience and a very good report in front of us this evening. It's Pam Lind.
Yes, I'm here. Hi. Good evening. Thank you very much for bringing me in. I think Elaine has covered all the really main points that we have discussed prior to coming into this meeting. But I think just to highlight the kind of effort that we are making to try and connect things and join up the dots so that we really have a meaningful impact as we go forward. And I guess in terms of one of the main topics of your previous conversation about how you interact with the public, how you interact with people who use our services, and so that you're kind of doing things once with people and getting the focus right so that you maximise how you can make things better for people who are very vulnerable and really trying to find their way through life and what we can do with the resources we've got to make the prospects better for them. So I think hopefully the report has come across in a very connected and coherent way. I think as independent chairs, the discussions we've had, we are starting to see that as a much more common theme. And actually, the aspects that we would want to improve on again are coherent. And I think if we work in that way together, hopefully we will do well for yourselves and the citizens of Dundee. So thank you.
Thank you. I think I'll take the opportunity to thank you and all your teams for all the hard work they do and the third sector that you've touched upon as well for the input they have in making sure the performance levels within your reports, which are excellent, are recognised. Thank you. So Councillor Creighton has a question.
Thank you, Convenor. It's a comment and then a question. The first comment is to just echo your comments. Me and my group would like to take this opportunity to deeply thank all the chairs and what they do for our city and for protecting people. So we'd just like to note that. My question, on pages 17 and 39 of the substantive page numbering, the issue that I've previously raised and expressed concern about, the suicide rate in the city, especially with males in these tragic circumstances, is highlighted and the dreadful statistics. Dundee has the highest level of suicide of all the Scottish local authority areas. And the loss of another 30 citizens last year through suicide is a grave charge. At 4.3.2 in the committee report, we are advised that a suicide prevention coordinator has been appointed. And this is really welcome with our group and hopefully around the city. But as a few questions in relation to that, can committee get a bit more information about the appointment? Is it a permanent appointment? Where does this sit with Health and Social Care Partnership, Health Services or Local Authority? And it'd be useful to get some indication of key tasks that the coordinator will undertake in the first year in terms of improving resilience to tackle the worrying statistics. I think across the UK, we've seen a lot of czars and a lot of bill put in place, which is great. But we need to actually see what they're doing, because the job's good. But we also need to see actions. Because I think as a committee, we can all agree that this rate is terrible and we want it to be reduced.
Thank you for the question. Elaine, would you take that one or Pamela? Either of both?
I can start it off. Catherine Sharp has a lot more information about the actual appointment that she may be able to shed light on for you. But we're really pleased that Robins has actually joined the team and he's hit the ground running to actually take things forward. And he's been focusing on the plan and what we're going to be doing, taking that plan forward. I think that at each committee now, there is a focus on suicide prevention, which wasn't the case before, and the linkages. And you may have seen stuff just recently about sextortion, young people who have been, you know, sort of conned into sharing information about themselves. And that lead into unfortunately some suicide attempts and sometimes some fatalities. So it all interconnects. And I think we're working really hard to make sure that we can join the dots and do what we can. And yeah, like you, I would really like to see that rate fall over the next period. So we'll be doing all that we can. So yeah, I really welcome that joined up approach and the appointment. But I think Catherine could give any further information perhaps to you separately about the task that you'll be taking forward. So thank you.
Thanks, Elaine. Over. Catherine, please.
Thanks, Convenor. So Robin Faulkner was appointed as the Suicide Prevention Coordinator. And he sits as part of our multi-agency Public Protection Strategic Support Team. So that's posted in the Health and Social Care Partnership, but it has a multi-agency role. So all officers work across all of the partner agencies to support their work around suicide prevention. The Chief Officers Group very recently approved the first recent delivery plan for suicide prevention in the city aligned with the national strategy. So that really details what Robin will be working on and supporting partners with around suicide prevention for the next period. So happy to make that available to members out with me in.
Thanks very much. Answer your question, Michael.
Yeah, that'd be very useful if I get any additional information. Appreciate it.
Okay, Councillor McKeever, please.
Thank you. Yes, an excellent report. Thoroughly enjoyed reading it. Easy to read. And I particularly liked the graphics, you know, how these are laid out. Very useful, although some of the statistics very stark. Under challenges, excuse me, and future priorities, I think that's at 4.3.1. You refer to the issue of trying to embed lived experience at a strategic level. I don't think we can underestimate the value of lived experience. So I wonder how you might go about trying to improve that.
Elaine, you can go back.
Yeah, I can pick that up. We've been working very recently with the Improvement Service and others on a project called Authentic Voice. And that has been really successful in terms of the drug and alcohol work and trying to get more people involved in that strategic development of the work. So they took a stocktake. They have looked at what was already in place. And they'd be recommending and working with us to try to improve that right across all of the committees. So I think it's a challenge nationally. I don't think, I think every area is still struggling a little bit with that. But we really, really want to be hearing back from people. You know, if we've worked with them before, has that made a difference to them? What could we have done better? And I think if we can get more people working together, grouping together, sharing their ideas, that will all be for the good as we move forward. So that will be a key focus for us this year. But we will have that support from that particular innovation, the Authentic Voice, people that are supporting us with that. So I'm sure that will feature more heavily in our report next year. I don't know whether Pamela wants to come in in terms of anything from the Drug and Alcohol Service.
Pamela.
Yeah. Okay. I think the other aspect that we've been discussing, because I think as is rightly pointed out, it's a tricky space to get right and how you can be representative and how you actually do reach out and hear back from the broadest group of people that's possible. One of the things that we were discussing just this week within our development session was the kind of work around Year of Kindness. And the plan that's starting to emerge around that also seeks to tap right in at the heart of communities through community planning, really using the mechanisms and the local groups that are there already to link in with communities and to understand what it's like on the ground in those communities and therefore, you know, what else that we need to do and think about in terms of designing responses that are going to be effective. So I think that, you know, there are a number of different ways. And again, I think it's a, it feels, you know, coming new into Dundee and seeing what's going on, it feels like there is a real handle on the kind of touch points that we could be doing more with. And a desire again to do that in a very connected way across the patch. I think the other one, just in relation to the previous item around suicide, and I guess mental health more generally, is obviously one of the standards that will be getting a lot more scrutiny over will be the integrated aspect of drugs, alcohol and mental health. And MAT standard has us focused in on that. So I think all these things require that voice, that require that understanding of, you know, anything that we come up with. How does that work for people? And does it really give them the right path to be able to make better choices and to build their lives up?
Thank you very much for the responses. Councillor McKeever, answer your question? Yep. Thanks very much for that. So no further questions. So we'll take the report as agreed. And thank you again for staying on for a longer evening than you probably expected. Sorry about that. Can we move on, Willie, please?
Thanks very much. Item three, Ben's Chief Social Work Office Annual Report on Glenn Lloyd speaking to this item, which is for noting.
Just a brevity, I'll just hand it over to Glenn right away as time's moving on. That's all to yourself, Con.
And elected members, I'm extremely proud to present the Chief Social Officer Annual Report for the period 2023 to 2024, which covers the period, as you know, when Diane McCulloch, the former CSWO, was in post before she retired in February this year. As the report says, Diane had worked tirelessly in the previous four years in extremely challenging circumstances, not least because of the COVID-19 pandemic. In my opinion, this mirrored Diane's approach throughout her career and the contributions towards the care, support and protection of people across the city were immense. When I was given the opportunity to occupy the role earlier this year, I knew that because of this work, the work of other leaders, managers and teams across all services, there was a lot to build on, as well as some enduring challenges for all social work and social care services. None of us can meet the often complex needs of vulnerable people alone. And I hope the report illustrates how we work collaboratively with both partners and service users. It highlights some key achievements, including teams across services winning or being shortlisted for prestigious Scottish and UK wide awards, a higher proportion of care experienced children, young people being cared for in family based as opposed to residential settings, a very high proportion of people discharged from hospital to community supports without delay, and one of the three highest performing areas nationally in the medication assisted treatment standards. In response to changing demands, financial constraints or new legislative requirements, teams have continued to learn, adapt, and in many instances, improve. Initiatives have included a range of preventative projects funded by Whole Family Wellbeing Funding, Infant Pledge, Berne Sues, plans from multidisciplinary co-located adolescent service, enhanced support from the Community Independent Living Service, Care at Home Team, Work on Fall Prevention, the launch of Hope Point, and intergenerational practice in care homes. Clearly, there are still some uncertainties and ongoing challenges. Nationally, we don't yet know how possible developments with the National Care Service and National Social Work Agency will unfold. The findings of recommendations of a caring spectrum thematic review of social work governance arrangements, due to be published in March next year, will be informative. And we're preparing for such developments as the enactment of all provisions of the Care and Justice Act and the outcome of adults within capacity consultation. Locally, the workforce remains a key priority in relation to recruitment, support, learning, development and retention. We'll also continue to address or contribute towards concerns relating to substance use, mental health, hospital admissions and patients whose discharge from hospital has been delayed. In adult services, there'll be a focus on care homes. And as you've just heard, on the Adult Support and Protection Improvement Plan, especially in relation to referral pathways and access to suitable support, whether or not people meet the so-called three-point test. I hope the report helpfully describes strengths, areas for improvement and priorities across all of our social work and social care services. I'm also conscious, of course, that as elected members, you may have questions. And as well as myself, we also have Dave Berry, interim chief officer here tonight, Catherine Sharp, who as you've heard is also here tonight, Angie Smith, head of service from Health and Social Care is on the call today, and also Alison Panaman, senior service manager, and of course, other council colleagues from across different services. I'll pause there and I'm conscious there may well be some questions.
Yeah, thanks, Glenn. And I have to say, it's a very well-rounded report and easy to read, somewhat to the previous reports. And there's some real positive and challenging numbers within there. And well done to you and your teams as well. I'd just like to pay credit to Diane as well, as yourself, who retired in February and whose service had, she went through the COVID-19 pandemic with the cost of living crisis before her retirement. I'd like to propose that committee notes their thanks to Diane for her contribution to the service, as you have done yourself in your statement. See, Councillor Duncan, please.
Convenor, yes. Firstly, can I just echo your comments there? Because it is a really comprehensive and mainly encouraging report. And just like to extend my thanks to officers for that and wish them well, you know, for further progress. The question we sent us about the community payback orders mentioned on page 95. Over the years, I've mentioned at committee that I'm actually quite a fan of these things when properly carried out. They're a real and effective alternative to custodial sentences. And so I'm always pleased. And they've certainly done useful things in my ward and I think all the wards in Dundee. So they're not a soft option and they are, you know, positive alternatives. My own slight concern, and that's why I'm asking the question, is that the completion rate still doesn't seem to have got back to where it was before the pandemic. It's heading in the right direction, but I just wonder if officers could give us a wee bit of explanation and reassurance on that.
And thank you, Councillor Duncan, for the question and your positive comments. And thank you, councillor Duncan, for the question and your positive comments in relation to, to community payback orders. Historically, in fact, since orders were introduced in the twenty eleven legislation as a council, we've been above the national average completion rate, which stands at seventy percent. There have been some dips over that thirteen year period. And as you see in the report, just recently, it dropped down to sixty-five percent. We're pleased that it's gone up to seventy percent, but with the caveat that successful completions don't necessarily mean effective practice. Because as you say, part of the credibility of a CPO relates to an enforcement of the order. It's not a soft option. So for instance, in those thirty percent of cases where people haven't completed successfully, it's likely that they didn't comply with requirements. They were given warnings, they were breached and they're returned to court to be, to be resentenced. So although successful completion rates are always striven for, they're not always necessarily a positive indicator of how the teams are enforcing those orders. They do need to be looked at with a degree of caution.
Does that answer your question, Frank?
That's, excuse me, fogging my throat. No, that's, that's great, Glenn. And I think it's important that the public do understand it. These are not soft options, you know, and, and, you know, failure to comply doesn't mean that, you know, the person is done with it. So thanks for that.
Thank you. And I see no further questions. So again, thank you, Glenn and your team for the efforts of putting to this and the report itself. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Take so long, item five, capital spending monitoring. There's two reports here before you, both of which are for noting.
All right, we have two reports here. It shows the latest projections twenty-four, twenty-five from thirty-first of August, and also for the thirtieth September. And the capital programme has been monitored in conjunction with the council asset management team. Councillor Coleman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Gavina. So on page one hundred and forty-six of the original report due to be considered at the end of October, under the depot rationalisation programme, only twelve thousand pounds of the original approved budget of over two million pounds, subsequently adjusted, had been spent. And the narrative says the service review is ongoing with a tender to follow after this is completed. The report that would have gone last month indicated a project rejected out run of five hundred thousand pounds by the thirty-first of March next year. But I note that the second report on capital at five point two point two now indicates a further deferral of four hundred thousand pounds on the amount. And, and that amount of actual spend is a little higher at forty-one thousand pounds. As a total expenditure this year is now targeted at just a hundred thousand pounds, and forty-one thousand pounds of that appears to have already been spent. What exactly is the tender not yet approved going to cover? And realistically, is anything much going to be achieved in debt for rationalisation this year? Blurtly, there's a huge difference between the original budget of two million pounds and the minimal budget now left.
Thank you. Robert, please.
Apologies, convener. And maybe better placed to provide that on the programme.
But, thank you. All right, Neil, would you like to come to councillor, please?
Thanks, convener. Thanks for the question, councillor Coleman. More than in conjunction with neighbourhood services colleagues, we're looking at the functionality of the depot. And that's why there's the fluctuations in the report. And as soon as we've got a cohesive plan in terms of what we're doing, we'll reprogram and reprofile the cash flow for that project.
Thanks. That's your question, Daniel?
For the time being, thank you, Mr. Gavina.
Thank you very much for that. And I see no further questions, so we'll take that as agreed. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. With both those items being agreed, item six, there's revenue monitoring. And again, there's two reports before you, both of which are for noting.
Just go to Billy Dawson in the first instance.
Yeah, thanks, convener. I'm aware there's a number of reports that have to go through this evening. So we may want to suggest suspending the relevant standing order to allow the business to proceed.
Thank you for the reminder. We've got, we've got three reports left which need to go through this evening. So I just want to see if the committee is agreeable for that. I see no dissent, so we'll just go ahead with that. Thank you. Item six is a report presents analysis twenty-four, twenty-five projected revenue outrun on the thirty-first of July, and also the thirty-first of August is before us. The committee's advising the chief executive and executive directors continue to take steps to manage the revenue expenditure, including reviewing service provision and reducing expenditure. And the committee has asked to endot the report. Billy Keenan, please.
Convener, on six point one, I think, or the final report, given that they're both very similar, makes reference to a dispute between the Scottish government and council in relation to teacher numbers and the potential for there to be some drawback for government of four point three million. Can, and also the risks, there only appears to be four risks, and that does not appear to be accounted for. So what way are we taking care of that risk? And what sort of feedback is there is in relation to that four point two million? Do we think there's a possibility that the Scottish government are going to be taking that back? In which case, the fifteen that we're looking at originally would have been worse than that?
I think you're well aware, this is actually COSLA at the moment, and the COSLA team are working with the government to try and find a solution with the teacher numbers. But I'll bring in Robert, please.
Thank you, convener. So we've obviously, in terms of the grant and the conditions associated with it, there's been a long discussion going on through COSLA, as to, particularly around what exemptions would apply in terms of teaching numbers. We believe, given where we are at, that there shouldn't be a risk to the grant that we should be issued with in terms of where we're at. But we're waiting for clarification through COSLA. And as and when there's further information, we'll bring it back to the committee.
Thank you for that clear response. Billy Miferson, please.
Yeah, just very briefly, and I'm conscious of time. So I'm happy that officers update myself and the members of the committee by email thereafter. And then the questions really are on the fluctuating messages being given in relation to three point two on page one hundred and seventy-two of the original report, and ironically, three point two of the second report in relation to temporary accommodation. The first report says that there are increased charges proposed for temporary accommodation. But the second report says that there are not to be increases in temporary accommodation charges to be applied this year. And I realise that the first report was written before the second one, and we just didn't reach the first one at the previous set of committees. But perhaps officers could, and I say I'm happy that it's done by email, given the time tonight, just give us an update on where they are with temporary accommodation charges. And if they're not reviewing them this year, how they're funding, what, you know, what would have been, I think something like two hundred and forty thousand that would have been achieved had that been reviewed. So as I say, happy that officers update separately from the meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Glenn Miferson and Mr. Emes Nwoda. And we'll get that email out to all elected members for information. Thank you very much. I don't see any further questions or comments. So can we move on to item eleven, please, Volly?
Okay, thanks. Item eleven, then, before his annual procurement report and community benefits update report.
This report provides an update to progress made in the year twenty-three, twenty-four and details of future planned activity of the corporate procurement. The report also includes an update on the community benefit activity undertaken within the city over this reporting period. Committee has asked to note the report. Councillor Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Gavina. On page three hundred and nine, I note it indicates a decline in the percentage of Dundee supplier invoices paid within fourteen days, from ninety percent down to eighty-eight percent. Is there any indication on how performance during this fin, this financial year? As I think we're all anxious to see local suppliers are paid promptly as possible.
Thank you. Ring up Paul Thompson, please.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Coleman, for the question. And I can confirm that the previous performance last year largely reflected the number of challenges we're having with the implementation of the purchase to pay system. But I'm pleased to inform the committee that since then, the current indicator for the current year, we have seen an increase in the percentage for that particular KPI.
That's your question, Daniel?
Indeed, that is good news. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And I see no further questions or comments. So we'll take that report as agreed. Can we have fourteen, please, Volly?
Thanks. Can we write on fourteen is the Integration Joint Board Financial Recovery Plan?
Report for us presents the Dundee Integration Joint Board twenty-four, twenty-five Financial Recovery Plan. And again, it's just for noting. Billy Keenan, please.
Again, obviously, in the, the, like you're trying to get finished, perhaps officers could come back on it. But I'm wondering what, what sort of, what plan is in place for the recovery, for the IGB to recover that level of overspend? And what particularly they do in relation to prescriptions, given that regularly here that prescription, people are given mega amounts of prescriptions, and another really changes keep getting a standing order that may well eventually go in the bin. They don't usually go back in the system in any way. And so it appears to be there's potentially a lot of money sticking out there that's not used wisely.
Thank you for that. Mr. Berry, would you like to answer that, please?
Yeah, thanks, convener. Thanks, Billy Keenan, for the question. So in relation to the first question around the IGB's financial recovery plan, so within the report itself, it sets out a number of steps that we are undertaking to try and bring back our expenditure as close as we can to budget book, acknowledging that there is significant increases in demand within the, within the community because of the demographics of, of the city. The IGB will receive a further report in December around our financial monitoring implications and an update in terms of where the financial recovery plan is at that point in time. In relation to prescribing, prescribing is a national cost pressure across all IGBs. There's a lot of work nationally going on around how prescribing can be more effective. And indeed, the issue that Billy Keenan mentions around kind of waste around medicines is being looked at at a national and kind of local level as well. And so there is, there are a number of work teams, particularly through NHS to decide around prescribing a better, more effective prescribing that will contribute to that. So we're hopeful to see some, some progress around that over the, the next couple of years.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Billy Keenan? Yep, thank you for that. I see no further questions or comments. So we'll take that report as agreed. And we've got a few minutes left, so possibly item seven, Volly, please.
Thanks. Item seven is the case on plan report. Not even.
Also, plan media progress report presents progress as of the thirtieth September on the overall performance against the targets set out in the council plan, and an update of the plan's main priority themes, actions and targets. And again, this isn't for noting. Councillor Creighton, please.
Thank you, conviers. Get myself off mute. Just a very quick question along the time. A question in regards to the empty retail units information on page one hundred and ninety-two. The rate of empty units remains very well above the target of twelve point four percent voids. Can officers give an indication of what practical steps are being taken to tackle this as the level of empty retailers remains worryingly high?
Thank you. Mr. Presswood, would you like to answer this one?
Robin, you need a mic?
For to go to this, Volly.
I'm not a hundred percent certain wherein the, the, the city plan elected member is quoting from. If it's council owned properties, we do have a very active marketing programme. But it is difficult to secure tenants for, for any kind of retail property at the moment. If it's city centre retail premises, we do work very closely with property owners. And we also will invest in violence to cover the properties to improve the appearance of vacant, vacant retail premises. But I have to pick that offline, the councillor Creighton.
Thank you very much. That's your question, Michael.
Yeah, thank you, convener.
Get the sponsors, baby. Okay, thank you very much. And I think that's business for this evening. Thank you for your patience, everyone, and good night.
Good night.